Dingfelder, Goods, Maniscalco, Citro, Miranda, Carlson, and Vera.
Here.
Okay, City Council is in session. Before we begin, Councilman Carlson, I think, wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just, I just learned the sad news a little while ago that Dina Levin Good passed away, who many of us know, and it's just shocking to the community. She was here last week at our meeting advocating for the Equal Rights Amendment. So, anyway, prayers go to Dina and her family and friends.
Thank you for that, Councilman. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and begin with, do I have a motion open? Public here?
Some seconds.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, I believe, and second by Councilman Goods, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we begin with number one. And before, Councilman Citro, you indicated there are, I believe, two you have to exempt yourself from.
No, 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 no. This is from last week. I had Form 8B that I needed to submit, and I do that at this time, from a variance, from a FAB case that, that I had to do. Excuse me, that I was a part of.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we begin with number one.
And Chairman, good evening, LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. If I may, counsel, I'd like to do a little housekeeping and clear up the agenda. There are a couple of items that cannot be heard this evening. Item number six is REZ 1956. That item cannot be heard. No affidavit was filed.
Motion to remove, please.
And what, can we do them all at once? Is there a second one?
Yes.
The other second one is a continuance.
Okay, okay.
Oh, there's this, item 10 also cannot be heard.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
REZ 1964, there was no affidavit filed.
Okay, may I have a motion to remove items six and 10, please?
Remove.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, second by Councilman Goods, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And there is a continuance?
Yes, sir. So, item number eight is REZ 1962. The applicant is requesting to continue this item to the November hearing. That would be November 14th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And Mr. McAlini, are you here for number one as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess whenever you come up, we can, or you know what? How about we just take care of it right now? Do you want to come forward and plead your case?
Our site plan has some deficiencies in it, and it didn't completely address staff comments. So, we need time to sit back down with staff and make those corrections.
Any questions from counsel? I'm sorry, what, sir? Oh, yes, sir. Okay, any questions from counsel? Before we take any, any question? Before we take any motions, is there anyone here who is here to publicly comment on item number eight solely the continuance? Okay, being none, we move. Are there any motions to continue?
On file number REZ 19-62, I move to continue it to November 14th.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM, yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, and before we begin, I was reminded, let's have everyone, please, if you're going to be speaking here today, please stand up, raise your right hand, stand up if you're able to do so, and prepare to be sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, let's begin. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. And Chairman, counsel LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, I just would like to mention on item four, items four and five, actually, what should be opened together historically, if there's a rezoning and a vacating, we would open those two items at the same time and hear both cases together for consideration. So, when we get to item four, staff would advise that counsel may want to open item five also.
Thank you.
Okay, and item one, counsel, is file number REZ 1955. This is for the property located at 4210 and 4212 West Carmen Street. The request is from RS 50 residential single-family to RM 18 residential multifamily. The applicant is Steve McAlini.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is in the West Shore Planning District. The closest public recreational, recreational facility is the Charles B. Williams Park, which is about two blocks to the south of the subject site. Hart Bus 30 serves the subject site as well, and it is in a Level B evacuation zone. This is in the West Shore Palms neighborhood. We're just south of the I-275 ramp. The West Shore Mall is about two blocks to the east, so it's just out of frame that way. I have North Hubert and West Carmen Street. This is an area that has definitely transitioned towards more of those multifamily developments. We've seen several of them. I have townhouses basically all along the block and a few remaining single-family homes in the area, but these are also multifamilies in the south as well, which is going to be reflected on your future land use map. The subject site is Residential 20. That's that darker brown that's pretty much throughout the whole site. And then we have a Residential 35 to the south, which is a little bit more of an intensive multifamily. And then Residential 10, this is single-family detached, and this is an SNU 6, which we don't see too much in this area of the city. That's typically north of Fowler, but sometimes we have this spottiness. So, one of, as you know, one of the principal objectives of the city's comprehensive plan is to ensure that we have an adequate supply of housing to meet the needs, preferences, and financial capabilities of Tampa's households. The proposed rezoning will further this objective by allowing more of those units on the subject site in an area that is planned for the multifamily, up to 20 dwelling units to the acre. And this is definitely transitioning in that direction overall. If you have any questions, I am available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel?
Counsel, LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. So, the request before you is for RM 18 residential multifamily. It's from RS 50 residential single-family. This is a Euclidian rezoning, therefore, no waivers are requested. At the time of permitting, all code requirements must be met under this zoning. The lot area for the subject property is 21,600 square feet. This is an aerial of the site. And just to orient you on the map, this is Carmen Street. This is Lois Avenue, and just north is the interstate. So, this is the property identified in red with the red dotted line, and this property is surrounded. It has RS 50 zoning north and east, and then also there's a PD that's located to the west, residential multifamily located further east along Lois. And this is the zoning map. The property is identified here with the green stripe. This is Carmen Street. This is Lois Avenue. This is Hubert Avenue, just to orient you with the site. So, this is the RS 50 zoning that exists, and this is the PD and the single-family residential attached that's located there to the south. And this is the survey submitted with the request. So, this is Carmen Street that's located north, and this lot would contain a width approximately 75 feet. And then this is the other lot that's on Carmen with the survey submitted. And here are pictures of the site. So, this is the site on Carmen. This is one parcel. This is the eastern side. Heading further east, this is the residential attached. And then heading south, this is on Gray Street. This is west. This is at the corner of Hubert and Carmen. This is the single-family residential that's located west. That's the view looking west on Carmen. This is north, which is the interstate, located north of the property. The DRC staff has reviewed the application, found the request consistent with applicable City of Tampa land development regulations, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from councilmembers? Okay, being none, we'll go to Mr. McAlini.
Good evening, counsel, Steve McAlini. As you'll note, that the Planning Commission and the city staff have both found this petition to be consistent. I refer you to, it's probably the most important document that we have regarding this petition, which clearly demonstrates that this, our subject properties are surrounded by multifamily. There's one single-family left here and a couple down here. But when the interstate was widened and they took out almost two blocks of houses in front of there, it basically leaves that transition area open for redevelopment and multifamily as a, as a good buffer between that and any remaining single-family to the south. We anticipate meeting all of the codes, as the staff has pointed out. If there are any exceptions to that, they'll have to go through a different process through variance or some such as that. But we have to meet the code as it's submitted, and we are respectfully requesting your approval. There were no letters or phone calls received regarding this petition of any concern or objection.
Thank you, sir. Anything further?
No, sir. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, being none, we move to public comment. Is anybody here to publicly comment on item number one? If so, please come forward. May I have a motion to close? We have a motion to close by Councilmember Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor. Any opposed? Counsel Mick Carlson, are you comfortable, sir, reading item number one?
File REZ. File REZ 1955 ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4210 and 4212 West Carmen Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification, RS 50 residential single-family to RM 18 residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
And Mr. Marty?
Yes, thank you. Counsel, also for your assistance tonight. Assistant City Attorney Kristen Moore has provided for you the sample motions under rezoning motions, and also highlighted in yellow, a review of site plan zoning districts. That doesn't apply for now. But if you can, just with regard to Euclidian rezoning, include the language that is on the sheet in front of you, if you can, for the purposes of the record.
Do you have that, Councilman Carlson?
If not... Yeah, move, move the ordinance as the petitioner has met its burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that the development as conditioned and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor. Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019, at 9:30 AM.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next, item number two.
Yes, counsel LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Counsel, item number two is REZ 1958. It's for the property located at 3302 and 3304 West San Juan Street. The request is from RM 16 residential multifamily to RS 50 residential single-family.
Jennifer Malone again with your Planning Commission staff. This is in the South Tampa Planning District. It is located in a Level C evacuation zone. Corona Park is the closest public recreational facility. Hart Route 19 and 36 serve the subject site. This is in the Palmacea neighborhood. Might look familiar because it came before you as REZ 1915 under a different request from, the request that time was for RM 18 zoning district. Counsel did not approve that, so they're back before you with an RS 50 request. This is West Bay to Bay Boulevard to the north, South Ferdinand Avenue, West San Juan Street, and then this is on the portion of the Roosevelt Elementary School to the south. And we have the little bit of a cement that hops onto the Bay to Bay Boulevard ramp. This is a mixture street with the types of housing, which is going to be reflected on the future land use map. I do know right here, this is some multifamily, but then there's also some single-family detached. It's a little bit of a, the pattern represents that mixture. The blue is the Roosevelt Elementary School. That's public. And then the orange is Residential 10, which is the single-family detached. And the brown color is Residential 20, which allows considerations of this multifamily uses. So, the street itself does have some different future land uses, which, which provides for that, that mixture of housing types that we see along that street. But we did find this consistent. While Residential 20 future land use designation does allow for more density, it also allows, it also allows consideration of this RS 50 zoning district. So, we did find it consistent. The street we found was developed at an overall density, or the subject site, allowing consideration of the two dwelling units, would have it at an overall density of 8.69 units to the acre, and it allows up to 20. So, it's definitely within that with this request. So, we did find it consistent with those policies in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from counsel?
Counsel LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. And counsel, this request for RS 50 residential single-family zone is a Euclidian request, so therefore, no waivers are requested. All standards must be met at the time of permitting. The current request for the subject site, it consists of lots one and two of Block 72 of Palmacea Park. The site was originally one zoning parcel with a total lot area of 10,000 square feet. The property is now two single-platted lots, each measuring 50 by 100 feet. The property is currently vacant. And this is an aerial of the site. So, this is the site that's identified in red. San Juan, this is San Juan Street. This is Ferdinand Avenue. That's to the east to orient you on the site. So, this site is surrounded with RS 50 zoning. To the south, there's some pockets of RS 50, to the north and northwest of the site. And to the east, an RM 16 is surrounding the property. This is the zoning map for the property, and this is the property identified in the green stripes. So, this is San Juan Street. This is Ferdinand Avenue, and this is Concordia Avenue. And I have pictures of the site. And so, this is the site. This is looking southwest. So, this is at the corner of San Juan and Ferdinand. This is looking west on San Juan. This is if you're on San Juan, looking at the site, looking south. This is north of the site. This is the residential located to the west. This is south of the site. This is on San Pedro. That's looking north. And this is east of the site. This is the southeast corner of San Juan and Ferdinand. And counsel, on page three of the staff report, staff has provided the analysis for the area. So, the Palmacea subdivision, it was originally platted in 1913 with lots 50 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. The re-subdivision consists of four blocks and 80 lots. The subject parcel is located on Block 72 of the subdivision on lots one and two. So, the applicant would reestablish the original platted lots to create two buildable lots. The DRC staff has reviewed the application and finds the request consistent with applicable land development regulations. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Bob St. Pierre. I'm here representing the applicant. As shown, both land development and the planning commission have found the rezoning to be consistent with the City of Tampa code ordinances as well as provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I'm respectfully asking that the counsel moves forward with this recommendation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel? Councilman Dingfelder?
Good evening. The aerial showed a prior use. I couldn't really make it out. What was the prior use?
It was, it was a home that was really a duplex way back, and then he converted it to one home. It was a single-family is what it was being used as.
How long's it been down?
Maybe six months, maybe.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, sir. Anyone here to publicly comment on item number two? If so, please come forward.
Good evening. I'd like to read into the record a letter from the Palmacea Homeowners Association.
And if you, sir, could state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jack Rodriguez, 3218 West San Juan, Tampa. Dear members of counsel, the Palmacea Neighborhood Association is in support of this rezoning request. We always encourage development of single-family detached houses. By this, we mean one lot, one house. This developer has been responsive to our input in requesting the RS 50 zoning category. There is RS 50 zoning directly behind the property and would make a perfect addition. Again, we support the rezoning petition respectfully submitted. Kimberly DeGans, President. I'd like to submit that to the record along with a letter from myself to the counsel. As stated, the subdivision is, was developed in the, in the Florida land boom, and all the lots in there are all 50 by 100. The existing zoning behind it is RS 50. If you go down there, there's narrow streets. You immediately get a feeling you're in an old and sustaining neighborhood, Tampa neighborhood. The request for two single-family detached houses will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is primarily single-family detached residential. There's been over 100 houses, single-family detached, built in the immediate neighborhood in the last five years, and there's still about eight or nine under construction. The market, and the market is saying that the neighborhood is a perfect location for single-family detached housing. The request will be a great addition to the character of the neighborhood. The Neighborhood Association is in support. I urge you to move, approve this petition based on competent and substantial evidence as provided in the comprehensive plan. Land use policy 9.5.2, maintain the character of single-family residential areas. Land use policy 9.5.4, maintain the current density and character of the existing single-family neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Jack, your testimony was longer than the petition.
We've really worked with him. We're really happy with what they want to do, and so I volunteered to come and talk on his behalf.
Always appreciated, sir. Anyone else here for item number two?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilmember Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilmember Miranda, are you comfortable with taking item number two, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move file number REZ 19-58. An order is being presented for first reading consideration, an order to rezoning property in general vicinity of 3302, 3304 San Juan Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification, or RM 16 residential multifamily to RS 50 residential single-family providing an effect. The petitioner has met the burden of proof to be competent substantial evidence that the development and conditions shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code. Specifically, that will be, promote the efficiency and stability of the land and infrastructure in the surrounding area.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir. On to item number three.
Counsel LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Counsel, item number three is REZ 1960. It's for the property located at 4450 West Ohio Avenue. The request is from RM 16 residential multifamily to CN commercial neighborhood. The applicant is Abbas Ashemi.
Good evening, Jennifer Moore with your planning commission. This is in the Westshore Planning District, as well as the Westshore Employment Center. The closest transit stop is about 1,600 feet to the east of the subject site. It's served by two routes, 7 and 36. It's within a level E evacuation zone. It's on West Ohio Avenue, and this is Manhattan Avenue. This is Air Cargo Road. This is all airport operations right here. I do have some multifamily to the south. And then this is right here, I believe, some jail operations for a juvenile center. So we're kind of a mixture of types of housing here between detached and multifamily, which is reflected on the future land use map. All the blue is public. That's either the airport operations or that detention center up here. We have residential 20, Community Commercial 35 to the south, which is the red. The subject site is residential 20. They are requesting the commercial neighborhood zoning district. That is allowable if the property meets the locational criteria that is set out in our comprehensive plan. So it can be considered in the residential 20 district if they meet the criteria in the plan. Part of that criteria is asking that the commercial use have direct access on roadways classified as an arterial or a collector. The access on this road for this site is on a local street on West Ohio, not along Air Cargo Road, and it directly interfaces a residential home. So the planning commission found that, that was not meeting the policy direction, that was not meeting the locational criteria. We cite how the comprehensive plan promotes the protection of the city's neighborhoods. We found that the proposed rezoning was not sensitive to the existing residential development located across West Ohio. And I'll cite land use policies 9.2.1, 9.2.2, and then 15.2.1. Overall, although this is, I'll use, can be considered under this future land use category, we did find that the access point was in conflict with the policy direction regarding for mitigating for potential impacts to residential development. And that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dingfelder?
Chair. Can you put the, I wanted to draw him back up that would show the existing residential?
It's a little tricky to see on mine. Maybe LaShawn would have some site pictures.
Well, don't, yeah, don't zoom in too much.
Well, is it good now?
I don't know. It depends on what you're going to point out.
So we have, yeah, I think that she has one that's a little bit better. Yeah, that is better.
Zoom out on that. Yeah. Some more, there you go.
So here's the access point, and these are the residential homes right on this local street.
Across the, across Ohio.
And there's also one right here. I mean, this is industrial, but then there's the additional access point.
And where'd you say the additional home was?
There's a home right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So pull back a little bit and talk to us about the possibility of accessing the, what is it called? The Air Cargo Road?
The Air Cargo Road, right. In the report, we did find that there wasn't any evidence presented in the application to planning commission staff. You know, this was discussed at the pre-application meeting. There might be concerns. I don't have any evidence that I've seen that would prohibit that happening, but I can hand it over to the transportation engineer as well.
Yes.
Or the city staffs.
Okay.
LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Counselman, just to give a bit of history on this roadway segment. So I don't know if you're familiar at all with this segment of Air Cargo Road, but what happened is historically, this roadway used to run the way that this yellow line is running. I don't know if you can see that yellow line for the parcel line. So Air Cargo Road years ago ran straight, and then it curved over. So at some point, the city did improvements and curved the right-of-way and aligned that road segment and added this landscaping. And they took away the curb cut because this location had access somewhere around here in this location on Air Cargo Road. So when the city did the improvements, they removed that curb cut, put a curb there. They removed the existing drive that was there at the time. And so that left these two access points. So there's one of two things to consider. With this applicant, they must be able to access their property. So the city must be able to grant them access. If the city took away the access, the applicant still has the right to access their property. So these are the two existing points that are located on Ohio. You can see that this one is within the property line, within the property boundary. This access point is actually in the right-of-way.
Okay.
So the applicant doesn't have to install a curb cut here to access their property. Because this was taken from them, when they go to permitting, they can have, they can use these two as access points. Normally, it would be a waiver. Say if they came through with the PD of planned development, that would be a waiver to access Ohio.
Okay. And we have transportation here?
We have transportation here, yes.
Okay. So you're familiar with this one?
Yes, sir.
All right. So my question is, if he came in and asked, requested to get his curb cut back, it looks like down in the bottom corner, his property touches the new Air Cargo Road, the right-of-way. So if he asked for a curb cut down in that corner, you know, would, or could the city give it to him?
Jonathan Scott, Transportation Planning. That's a good question. I don't believe the applicant wants to do that, but we'd have to look at the corner clearance and all the other stuff to make. But to my understanding, the applicant doesn't want to access it that way. They want to continue to use what was given to them. It might not be a good idea to put a new access back in there, because they took it away for some reason.
Well, it's just kind of a strange situation, because looking at that building, it looks like it's been a commercial building, not an RM 16, right? So he's had a commercial use there as a non-conforming use on an RM 16. So now he wants to turn it to a conforming use in terms of being commercial neighborhood.
Correct, LaShawn Doc.
Right.
You are correct, counsel.
But the planning commission staff is recommending against it because he doesn't have the right curb cut going out to Air Cargo, which we took away previously.
The belief is that when this roadway was created, when this new alignment took place, there may not have invisibility.
Remind me of...
Visibility.
Mm-hmm.
To keep this drive here in this location from this point because the roadway curves out.
That makes sense, but he didn't, he probably didn't ask for that road to...
He didn't ask for this to be closed off, and he also has not come forward. On the other hand, he also has not come forward and asked to have that as an access point. He can pull a permit, and he doesn't have to have that as an access point.
All right. So I cut you off from your presentation. What's the staff recommendation?
Okay, so yes. Yes, so the staff's recommendation was a finding of consistent for this request. A finding of consistent?
Consistent.
Yes. So the property, so the applicant is requesting a commercial neighborhood to CN zoning designation. The subject property has the one-story structure on the site. It contains approximately 15,678 square feet. This site has historically been used for assembly uses. So as you mentioned, Councilman Dingfelder, it hasn't been used as residential historically. That structure has been there. The subject lot area contains 139,400 square feet. So it is a pretty considerable lot. So this is the lot that's here in red. And this is Ohio Avenue, and this is Air Cargo Road, which we've been discussing. This roadway network does not go through. Out on site, this is all wooded. And then this is the next residential here, and then to the north are the two residential. So there's IG zoning that's to the northwest. The RM 16 is north and east of the site. CI is to the south. And then you have the PD, which is the airport associated uses, which is the FedEx uses there. And this is the zoning atlas. So that's the property that's there in green, the entire site. This is Ohio Avenue, and this is Air Cargo Road that's located here. And this is the view looking west on Ohio. So this is the site located here on the left in the picture. And this is the site here. This is the east end of the site. This is the west side of the site. This is Air Cargo Road, and that's looking at the site there. This is another view, a little closer up of the west side of the site. This is that drive access on Ohio. So this is the closest drive that's to Air Cargo And this is the site, another view. This is the north end of the site, another view. So this is moving towards the east, and then we'll come back north. This is the commercial that exists, which is north of the site. This is that residential that's north. Across the street, coming back east, that's the South of the site is the vacant lot. So this is the vacant lot, and the site is located here on the left side, outside of the frame of the picture. This is west of the site across Air Cargo, and that's another view across Air Cargo Road. So the development review compliance staff found the request consistent with applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any further questions?
No, I, Chairman, I believe that FedEx and right around there, that's between Tampa Bay Boulevard and MLK Boulevard on Cargo Road.
Correct.
And that's a little winding area, right after you pass that. And on the right-hand side, there's a place to disassemble cars, or they sell all kind of whatever you want.
Like auto repair.
And once in a while, there's a semi blocking that at 7:30 in the morning when I'm going to work. That's why I remember it.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Good evening. My name Abbas Ashemi, and I request that property...
And I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Do you mind speaking up a little bit?
My name Abbas Ashemi.
Thank you, sir.
I am coming here, this is my first time to do these things. I'm sorry if I'm not...
We're, we're very tolerant in terms of first timers, so don't worry about it.
This location at the 4450 West Ohio Avenue, this was a multiplied family residential, and we want to turn it to the commercial and the CN. And we are, anything they ask us and request us, we done. And we think that locations don't have any problem becoming as a commercial things, because around the way she explained everything very well, you know what I mean? That makes me like a fool if say anything about it. The front of us on the west side, all across of the buildings, the airport. And the north side of us of the property, they have two wicked lot. And south out of us, they have a bunch of the, what they call it, the commercial businesses there, as the course of they use all the parts and other commercial. And the south, at the east side of us, have some residential property behind us. So we request to turn this location, they come as a commercial if that's possible.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. Any questions from council for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you. Anybody here to publicly comment on item number three?
Move to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Citro, do you feel comfortable reading item number three?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance, REZ 19-60 ordinance be presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4450 West Ohio Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, RM 16 residential multifamily to CN commercial neighborhood, providing effective date. As the petitioner has met the burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, more specifically that the, the land, excuse me, the land development finds this request consistent, and that it does meet the goals and objective of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, Councilman Dingfelder, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Or a comment?
Comment.
Oh, yes, sir. Go for it.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think we all like to give deference to the planning commission and the good staff they send to us with their, with their wisdom. But in this case, I think the property, the property's been there as commercial for a long time. I think the residents, the residences around there have to be, you know, very used to intensive uses around them, right next to the single-family residence is an industrial general. In addition to the commercial uses, there's a lot of commercial uses around there, as well as industrial uses. So in this case, and we also put them into the situation when we curve the road. So I think in this case, we can, at least I can support the motion.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, and was it Miranda or...
Miranda.
Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir. Next, we move, I guess, items form five together?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Counsel, item five is REZ 1924. This for the property located at 1603 North Florida Avenue. The request is from RM 24 and CI commercial intensive to PD planned development for the use of business professional office and professional residential treatment facility. The applicant is being represented by Truett Wagner.
Good evening, counsel. I will go ahead with planning commission's finding on the rezoning aspect of this. This is in Tampa Heights, within the Tampa Heights Urban Village. It's not located within an evacuation zone. It's adjacent to a heart transit stop which connects, serves by heart route one. I have an aerial. You're probably familiar with the site if you've ever driven north on Florida Avenue. It's the Salvation Army site. I have the Rialto Theater and the Hall on Franklin over here, and the Tampa Heights uses, and then some general commercial uses along North Florida Avenue, and some residential over here, just reflected by the future land use map. It does have two future land uses. The red is Community Commercial 35. That allows up to, that allows consideration of commercial general, commercial intensive uses. The dark brown is Residential 83. It's a pretty intensive residential future land use category. And then that sliver of purple is your regional mixed use 100, which is very intensive. And that's where all that intensive Tampa Heights development is all in that regional mixed use 100. We did find this consistent, inconsistent, for the record, inconsistent, because neighborhood policy, NE policy 1.7.2 states that the comprehensive plan should seek to support the standards in the land development regulations that addresses the location and excessive concentration of these types of uses, such as group homes and treatment facilities. The land development code does require a certain distance requirement between these, and as per the land development code staff's report, this did not meet that distance requirement. So per the policy, you know, we're not meeting that policy, seeking to provide for that, moving away from that excessive concentration. The comprehensive plan does have numerous policies that address the need to provide housing opportunities for the homeless and the disabled. However, as I stated before, that distance requirement has not been met, and therefore, that policy has not been met. So the proposed PD would result in an increase of beds for the neighborhood, and we found that it would be an excessive concentration, which is exactly what the policy, NE policy 1.7.2 seeks to avoid. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Thank you.
Jimmy Cook, Planning and Development, I'll be doing the report on vacating on item number four. Applicant's...
Uh, applicant's requesting to vacate a T-shaped alley lying north of Henderson Avenue, south of Seventh Avenue, east of Florida Avenue and west of Morgan Street.
Petitioners' properties crosshatches in red, subject alleys highlighted in yellow. Seventh Avenue to the north, Morgan to the east, Florida to the west and Henderson to the south. The north-south alley is 16 feet wide, east-west alley is 15 feet wide. The north-south alley is gated at both ends. The east-west alley is gated at the Morgan, blocked off by a fence actually. The north-south alley is improved. East-west alley is mainly grass, unimproved until you get to right out here, it's paved. Neither one of the, the subject alley is not in an overlay district or historic district. Proposed vacating is approximately 8300 square feet. And it comes out of the plan of Tampa Heights subdivision which was platted in 1890. Here's the plat. Subject alleys highlighted in yellow. Green alleys are still open. The red alleys have been previously vacated. In a broader view, a half-mile area, all the alleys highlighted in red have been vacated. Green are still open, subject alleys in yellow. And I've got a couple pictures. This is north-south alleyway looking north from Henderson Avenue. This is the north-south alleyway looking south from Seventh Avenue. This is the east-west alleyway looking west from Morgan Street. And there are a couple pictures of the applicant's property. This is the property looking east from Florida Avenue. It's also looking east from Florida Avenue. This is looking east from the corner of Florida and Henderson. This is their property looking north from Henderson Avenue. It's another shot looking north from Henderson Avenue. This is the applicant's property looking west from Morgan Street. And this is the applicant's property looking south from Seventh Avenue. And this is the abutting owner property that's not including the vacating. That's looking west from Morgan Street. Staff has no objections to the vacating request as long as easements are reserved. And the zoning applications associated with this vacating is contingent upon the vacating and approved. I'm available for any questions? If not, I'll turn it over to LaShawn.
All right, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
No?
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Citro?
You had your finger up first.
All right, Dinkeldr had his finger up first. Go ahead.
My finger will talk. Okay. Jimmy, I just have one question for you was, uh, that parcel, I think it was lots one and two, that's, that's right up there in the top corner. Right. Who, do we know who owns that?
St. Joseph Hospital.
St. Joseph's Hospital. And that, I guess that's just residual from, is that where the old St. Joseph's used to be?
Seventh and Morgan Street.
Is that right? Yeah.
Interesting. All right, I think I have my appendix taken out there. I don't know if I have to recuse myself or not.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for that. I just clarify, is this an expansion or is this going to be relocating and moved? And if so, what is going to happen to the, the property that it's located at now?
I'll let LaShawn speak to it on the rezoning and the applicant probably answer that also.
And actually, I should ask the applicant, but please, LaShawn.
Counsel, LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Councilman, I believe the applicant's intent is to close one operation which is located across the street from this current request and then to open this location which I'll go through within the report that I'll provide for you.
Thank you for providing that information. Then I'll ask the applicant the same thing.
Okay, counsel.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
With this request, counsel, there are six waivers requested. The first two waivers requested for this PD are relating to the special use criteria under 27-132. They are relating to the distance requirement. So the first waiver is the distance from the professional residential facility from 2,000 feet to 75 feet. The second waiver request is to decrease the distance from a congregate living facility from 1,200 feet to 392 feet. And counsel, I just wanted to briefly explain the difference between the professional residential facility and the congregate living facility. And the zoning code defines the two uses. So the professional residential facility actually, in addition to providing lodging, can provide certain medical services, therapeutic care, those types of services, counseling services. The congregate living facility provides lodging and then assistance with personal services. So no medical services are provided with the congregate facility. This, the next waivers requested are to transportation is 27-283.7. It's to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 48 to 39. And the 27-283.12 and it's to allow access to a local street. 27-283.15 to allow loading to occur in more than one continuous maneuver in the right-of-way. And then a waiver to section 27-285 is to reduce the required vehicle use area buffer from the north from eight feet to one feet with payment and lieu at the time of permitting. So counsel, the applicant is requesting to rezon to allow for business professional office use and professional residential treatment facility uses with 172 beds proposed in that, in the unit. There is an existing building that's on site. So the property is currently occupied with, with that two-story building and it contains 38,200 square feet. So the applicant is proposing that use the existing building, 10,000 square feet of that existing building for business professional office use. And they're proposing to use the professional on treatment facility with 172 beds and the remaining 28,200 square feet within that building. So the property owner is Salvation Army and they have a transient housing use which has been determined to be comparable with zoning, for zoning purposes, to a professional residential treatment facility. It is located at 1514 North Florida Avenue. It has 145 beds, which we did research on, it was unlicensed by the state. The property owner intends on selling that property and moving those existing beds to the location and under this request, which is 1603 North Florida Avenue. So due to the proposed waivers, the applicant is elected to process as a PD of Plan Development with the special use to review criteria remaining applicable. Because for the use of the professional residential facility, it is, it requires special use to approval. So this is an aerial of the site, which is a little overview of what Jimmy just showed. So this is the property that's outlined in yellow. This is east Seventh Avenue, running north of the site, this is Florida Avenue. This is the location where the existing use is. And that is the request for the waiver to the 75 feet for the existing use on site. This is the zoning atlas. So this is the property identified in the green stripe. This is Seventh Avenue, this is Florida Avenue. So the request, this area to the west and the north and to the south has CI zoning, commercial intensive zoning. And then the areas to the east of the site and the east half of the site is in the RM 24 zoning district. This is the site plan that was submitted with the request. So the property line is outlined in yellow, the property boundary in yellow. So this is Seventh Avenue. This is Florida Avenue. And this is Henderson. So this site proposes access, vehicular access from Henderson and also from Seventh Avenue. Parking is proposed along the north and the east side of the site. And this is the structure that exists that's on site currently. And counsel, the DRC staff has reviewed the request and finds the request inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa Land Development Regulations. Please refer to the findings from transportation and they are related to the waivers which are transportation-related with their finding of inconsistent. And also within the report, there's information provided from Planning, Design and Development Coordination regarding their finding of inconsistent. And this is regarding the distance separation requirements. And you'll find on page four of the report, there's transportation's finding of inconsistent. There are also site plan modifications requested and there are minor notes to be added to the site plan from transportation. On page five of the staff report, there's natural resources comments and those are regarding site plan modifications to be added between first and second reading. And also at the bottom of page five, counsel, you'll see the criteria, the regulations for special uses under section 27-132. And also what we provided for you is on page six of the staff report, the definition section under section 27-43 in the zoning code. And it's the definition for professional residential facility. And then you'll find the other findings of fact on pages six through nine on the staff report. If counsel, if you should decide to approve this request this evening, site plan modifications are required between first and second reading. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Citro?
Yes. Can you comment or re-comment on this distance separation?
Yes, yes. So LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. So the special use, there's special use criteria within the code and they're found under 27-132. And for the uses of the professional residential facility, also for a congregate living facility, there are certain standards and regulations that must be met in the special use criteria. One of them is the distance separation. So within the code, under 27-132 for professional residential facility, which is under the request this evening, you're required the distance of 2,000 feet in between uses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant?
Good evening, Truett Gardner, 400 North Hasty Drive. Little bit of housekeeping. If it's okay, I'm going to open up, address the vacating first since the vacating, if vacated, will be a part of the PD. So it's a little bit backwards, but kind of feel legally need to do that first. Again, Truett Gardner, 400 North Hasty Drive. It's, it's my pleasure to represent Salvation Army. I'm humbled to be able to represent not just their board of directors, but they're dynamic and energetic. Area commander Andy Miller, who's going to be speaking later tonight. And it's funny, through the, I've always heard of the Salvation Army, but through the eight months to a year, I've been representing them, really have gained an appreciation, not just of what they do for caring for the homeless, but also their larger mission of trying to eradicate homelessness in the Tampa Bay area. And I was on vacation last week and was listening to a podcast and at the end of the podcast was a lead-in to another. And that podcast was on what are society's big problems and are they solvable? And the number one topic they took was homelessness. And the lady that they interviewed, who was spot-on on all of it, the leading resource, said absolutely homelessness is something that can be solved. And when you think about it, the number one thing that you've got to do first and foremost is provide just the basic shelter over somebody's head. And then from there, you can start to determine, is there a substance abuse problem? Is there a mental health problem? But first and foremost is providing just that basic need of shelter. And that's what Salvation Army does and they, they do it better than anybody. So again, it's my honor to represent them. As it relates to the vacating, if I could, I'm going to put back up this is a little bit of clear map. This is Seventh Avenue on the north. Florida on the west. And then, so this is Salvation Army's property. What we were going to originally do is this alley actually cuts through the middle of their property. They are the only user of that. So initially, all we were going to do was vacate the north-south portion. But the city has a provision where they don't want you to create a dead end. So as a result, we were requested to vacate the east-west portion, which Salvation Army owns on the south side. And then I believe somebody asked the question on the north side, which is St. Joseph's Hospital. They've also been advised of this request and are supportive of it. And I always go back to, it was like, yeah, 2011 when Chip Fletcher was city attorney. Julia Mandell wrote this memo, legal memo, talking about the justifications for the city to use when they go about a vacating petition. And I've highlighted, I think, what's the pertinent part. Sufficient public interest to justify vacating the street would be for the purposes of relieving the public from the cost of maintaining a street or highway that is no longer useful or convenient to the public. For example, vacating the street or alley used by only a few members of the public. And in this instance, this east-west portion, as Jimmy Cook testified to, is unimproved. City has no use for it. And then as it relates to the north-south portion, the only users of that are Salvation Army's. It really fits that memo very well. And that's what I believe is the justification for the, for the vacating request. Then, as it relates to the rezoning, a couple things. One, we're presenting not just a rezoning petition, but really kind of the overall larger-scale master plan for this area. And Andy's going to talk to, Ken Miller is going to talk to the operations and what this means, this consolidation into this one building. And then Keith Reminger with, Kenley Horn has been our planner and has worked from the beginning of this, is going to talk about the overall meaning of this. But if I could, just to walk you through. So Florida Avenue running north-south. The subject property is this L-shaped property here. But Salvation Army owns this property here as well as this property to the north. And then lastly, immediately catty corner to the 1603 building, which is what I'll be referring to as the subject property, is this building here, which is currently the Red Shield Lodge. So what this effort is, is to dispose of this asset, this asset, which are currently on the market. Then, this is the existing Red Shield Lodge. It currently has 145 beds. It will be closed down once the renovations occur at 1603. And, but the problem and the inconsistencies that we're having with staff, which I totally understand, are they're forcing the situation to be looked at myopically. The only way to do what would need to be done under the code would be to close this operation and then get this operation, do the improvements and then move, move the homeless in. But as we know, life doesn't exist that way. And so what they're trying to do is go ahead, get the approval for this, do the renovations. At that time, the residents would move from the existing Red Shield Lodge into 1603 and then that asset would be disposed of consolidating all operations into this block right here. So that's just the general overview of, of what it is that's happening. And I think the best way for me to spend my limited time, which will help with the justifications of this, is to address the waivers. Because the waivers actually really also address what the findings of inconsistency are. And I think once we walk through them, you'll understand and have an appreciation of the situation. So waiver one is to decrease the distance from a professional residential facility from 2,000 feet to 75 feet. Again, with this, the sole reason that, that we're tripping this waiver is the 75 feet is the distance from 1603 to the existing Red Shield Lodge. So but for the desire to keep this operation going while these renovations are occurring, that waiver wouldn't be needed. Then waiver number two, to decrease the distance from a congregate living facility from 1,200 feet to 392 feet. On this one, not only is it that same argument and just as a frame of reference, slightly off the screen, north of Oak is Palm, is the Baptist Tower. That is the congregate living facility being referenced here. So again, once the Red Shield Lodge goes into inaction, the homeless move to 1603. We're 75 feet closer. But also, this is a special use approval from city council in 1995 for the 1603 property. And it granted the, the waiver of the distance separation, which you which you can see highlighted here from, I'm sorry. So it granted the waiver from twelve-hundred feet to eight hundred and ninety, which is the distance that's being referenced as far as the separation on the congregate living facility. Thirdly, to reduce the required number of parking spaces from forty-eight to thirty-nine. This again is for a professional residential treatment facility. What's unique about this is we're serving the homeless, and the homeless don't drive. But on top of that, we're also, we've got ten thousand square feet of office. So in a way, we're double counting the parking because we're required to park at three point three per thousand for the office. Those same people will be serving the homeless upstairs in the way that, for a professional residential treatment facility, parking is counted as by employees. So those employees will be officing at the ten thousand feet below, but will be servicing the people upstairs on floors, on the second floor. And then number four, to allow access to a local street in lieu of direct access to On this one, getting to orient you, Florida Avenue running north-south, Seventh Avenue to the north, and then Henderson running here. So currently, there is a curb cut on Florida Avenue. This is the existing building right here, on Florida Avenue. FDOT demanded that that access be removed, forcing us to one of these access points, which already exist. Secondly, in working with the Tampa Heights Civic Association, they are trying to eliminate curb cuts on Florida. And then finally, as Keith will speak to, the desire is to run the streetcar along Florida Avenue running north-south. And so the more that Florida Avenue can be cleaned up and access points eliminated, the better. And, but again, that forces us to use the local street, which is Seventh here, and then coming out on Henderson, but those access points already exist. Then number five, to allow loading to occur in more than one continuous maneuver and to allow maneuvering in the right of way. Getting back to the site plan on it. This refers to, there is a loading dock, which is also in existence right here. The way that this site has been designed, though, is on the north side, which is the heavy traffic for trash collection, it is internal, and so it has nothing to do with the solid waste collection, and only to do with this one little loading area right there, which is already in operation. And then finally, the last waiver, to reduce the vehicle use area, buffer area, to the north, from eight feet to one foot, with payment in lieu of at time of permitting. Again, this is an existing condition. This is, only relates to the north parking lot in this area here. This parking lot exists, and there is a one-foot separation currently between the northern end of the parking lot and the property line. So that's an existing condition that we're asking for a waiver from. So with that, my hope in going through that is that you see the, what the waivers are and why it is that we need them. Many are existing conditions. Others are primarily due to the fact of wanting to keep the operations going while the renovation occurs. We did try through a condition, which we had worked on with the Tampa Heights Civic Association, to have a condition of zoning, which would require, in order for us to be able to get our certificate of occupancy at the end of construction for sixteen oh three Florida. In order to do that, the operation at Red Shield Lodge would have to cease existence. Unfortunately, and, but rightfully, the city attorney staff is not allowing us to have that condition because it impacts another property that's not the subject of the rezoning. As I mentioned, that was a critical issue with the Tampa Heights Civic Association. And the way that we've cured that with them is we have a letter agreement, which Marty, I'll hand to you for city council, agreeing with them that that operation at the existing Red Shield Lodge will cease existence within thirty days of the CO being obtained for the sixteen oh three building. And then finally, I just wanted to mention just the level of community outreach on this. I believe we've had in excess of twenty meetings with Tampa Heights Civic Association, neighboring property owners, and stakeholders in the area. These uses aren't always the easiest of uses. A lot of times, this would inspire a packed house, but I think we've got a high level of support. The Tampa Heights Civic Association is not taking an official position, but we've addressed or sought to address all the concerns that they've had. And so with that, I'll turn things over to Andy Miller and then to Keith Grimminger.
And let's pause your time, Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Gardner, I was just curious, in the alley, I couldn't tell from any of the photographs, but is there any city brick in there?
No. I wasn't really going to show it, but as I mentioned.
Because Seventh Avenue sure could use some.
Correct. No, so the east-west portion here is unimproved, so nothing at all.
Right.
The north-south is just asphalt.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
It just, and since we're taking these applications together, I assume the time is also being used collectively between the two.
Sure.
Friends of the council, thanks for having me here. I'm Captain Andy Miller. I'm the area commander for the Salvation Army in Tampa Hillsborough County. Thanks for hearing our case here today. As I walked to city council, city hall, I walked right by a green sign, historical marker on your property that says, right here, in eighteen ninety-three, the Salvation Army began with Captain Wilbur Hall and Captain Fred Weller. You'll be glad to know I'm not here to claim any ownership of this building or this property. So we're glad to be able to have opportunity to address you. We've been in town, serving for a hundred and twenty-six years, and the Salvation Army just began a hundred and fifty-four years ago. So we came to Tampa relatively soon into our history, and our mission has remained consistent, to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and meet human needs in his name without discrimination. We've been in our same area for about that same amount of time. Our first building was on Tampa Street, and then we've been in the same general area right there on Florida for, since the nineteen sixties. So we're really excited to be able to tell you just briefly about what's been happening from a programmatic and operational standpoint, so you can understand what's going on. As you know, Tampa Heights has changed. Tampa Heights has grown, evolved, and we, the Salvation Army, have changed and grown with that neighborhood. You might remember, and I know you all have been in town longer than me, there was a time where the Salvation Army, we weren't using really what the Salvation Army would consider the best practices for our emergency sheltering. Note, too, that this is the very distinct ministry that the Salvation Army has in our community. Nobody else does emergency sheltering for single men and women. When I arrived, my wife and I arrived, and she's back here with my three kids as well, we realized that we were duplicating services of other programs in town. So for instance, Metropolitan Ministries was doing a variety of family housing. We closed our sheltering on sixteen oh three, the building that's in, that we're talking about tonight. And we concentrated then on our sheltering for single men and women. What we did is we eliminated what Bob Lupton, Dr. Bob Lupton calls toxic charity practices. Instead, started to incorporate concepts of, from the book, When Helping Hurts, and really the best practices for housing and also in homeless sheltering. So what we've been able to do then is we stopped all public feeding. You might notice at Henderson and on Florida, there's significantly less people who are there hanging out in that block. We instead are focused on the hundred and twenty people who are staying in the Red Shield Lodge. And if we were able to get a magic wand, and we can move into a refurbished sixteen oh three building today, we would only house a hundred and twenty people. Because what we've done at that building is we've shifted our operation. And here's how we've shifted our operation. You might remember there were a time where there used to be a line of people who would line up on Florida Avenue. That does not exist anymore. You might remember a time where people have to, line would leave the building at seven AM. We also, after a period of time, served lunch to five hundred people. But we've stopped those practices, instead become a twenty-four hour shelter, so that our main goal is to help people who have a desire to get out of homelessness, to take the capacity that we believe God has given them, to be able to use that so they can indeed step out of homelessness. And what that's done is it led us to a more active place of helping our neighborhood. This is why I believe Tampa Heights has not, is not opposing us, and why Tampa Heights has in general been supportive of our project and where we're going as a whole. So we've been able to stop some of those challenges of vagrancy, or people kind of walking around in general, though of course, those type of things will happen in an area like this. We have, what we're trying to do then is take our Red Shield Lodge, a nineteen twenty-six Holcinger Building, and move all of our operation into our sixteen oh three facility, which will then be completely renovated. And we'll be able to serve our community better if we're able to get into that building. I think it will be better for everybody from the perspective of what's going to happen in our community. One of the interesting things, too, that happens is that all the economic development in Tampa Heights, we have been a part of that in a sense, because the folks who come to us have a desire to get out of homelessness. And when they do, we need them to find jobs. I would guess that today, we had fifteen people who are working at Armature Works, another half a dozen or so that are working at the Hall. And then if we have people downtown, we have people who are working downtown as well, and they're getting these entry-level jobs that we have in our area. And this is helping us, of course, in our community to do better. So what we've been able to do, we've been able to clean up some of the people who are eating on the street. We try to even help people, one well-intentioned church groups that come down and serve on the street, to try and have an avenue for them to serve at our shelter by them helping the folks who have decided to move from the street to their feet. So this is just an overview of what we hope to do. I think this will be a great improvement. I know there's several things that Truitt walked through, and we're glad to answer other questions, too. But thank you for taking time to consider this, and I turn it over to Keith at this time.
Good evening, council. Keith Grimminger, six fifty-five North Franklin, urban designer and community planner with Kinley Horn. We're here in support of this for multiple reasons, as you all are well aware. Our urban core is shifting, expanding. Our edges are becoming more of a part of that core. And this is the area that is receiving that benefit as the core expands. Traditionally, I think, the interstate was kind of what everybody considered the edge of downtown. It's moving into the northern areas of the community. What Salvation Army is doing here is intensifying in density growth within their footprint. And by doing that, they're allowing themselves to divest some of their investments and put it out to the market to create more taxable value and more development take place. Unfortunately, as staff has identified, and rightly so, we've got a little bit of a chicken and egg or a, you know, musical chairs situation here in the sense that we have to be able to rezone this property, get it up and going, expand its capacity to take in the residents in the Red Shield, and then allow that property to become online, which I'm quite certain, knowing that building, and you all have seen it, a very grand building, actually contributing to the overall neighborhood, and it will be brought into use very quickly, we think, thereafter. So in looking at, again, how the Salvation Army has continued to evolve, the evolution of the city, the idea that we will have a streetcar that would be running up through this area in some time soon, hopefully, the opportunity for those that are residing there to have further expansion of their ability to find work. I dare to say it's probably not exactly what was thought of, but this is workforce housing right now, for people to allow to get on their feet, start to earn a little bit of a wage, and move up through their life. So I'm here to answer any other questions, but I would grant that you would take a look at this, understand how this area is transitioning, and this is just part of that transition. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Again, Truitt Gardner, four hundred North Ashley. Just in closing, I failed to show this before, but this is the rendering for the renovated sixteen oh three building. And then also, even though the current Red Shield Lodge is not on the market yet, really pending this rezoning, and then also figuring out the logistics of the construction going on here, and timing is when the residents could move over, even though it's not on the market, Salvation Army has already received an unsolicited offer for it. And, but as soon as these details are worked out, it'll be on the market, just as the sites to the north and to the south already are on the market. So with that, I'll close, and happy to answer any questions.
Sure. And with that, I mean, we see opening up those properties, the north property, our south warehouse property, as being able to contribute to economic development of the neighborhood, to this opportunity, hopefully, I don't know if you'd see this as trustees of the city, of getting more tax dollars on your roles, more tax income, and this would be a great opportunity for us to be able to contribute to that. So we're excited to mention that. Sorry, Truitt, if I cut you off too soon there. Just mention one other thing. Four hundred and fifty-three people last year moved into permanent housing from our Red Shield Lodge. And I think that we'd be able to do better if we have a better facility. And you all are welcome to come at me anytime and serve a meal. You're welcome to come and walk through our shelter. We'd love for you to come and see what God's doing through the Salvation Army.
Nothing further? Okay, any questions from council? Councilman Goobes, did you, and then Councilman Dingfelder?
Well, I can't say I'm familiar with the Salvation Army. Being retired police officer, I've dealt with many people in that area. When you talk about helping folks who want to be helped, the area is growing, and they're getting jobs at Armature Works, and those places down there, it means that something is coming about in good for those folks who want to strive for better. So I'm supportive of what you do with the Salvation Army, and you keep on doing what you're doing, because we are in crisis for homelessness situations. And I know just a little bit above that, our Ebor area, B and B people are very, very adamant about the homeless situation. So if you can help out in any kind of way with that problem, we'd really appreciate.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder?
Thanks. So we were given this letter with our assurances that they would terminate within thirty days, obtaining the CO, et cetera. Mr. Gardner spoke to that. You read my mind.
Good evening, Kristen Moore, Legal Department. Thank you for inviting me up, Councilman Dingfelder, without even saying it.
We're psychic, no.
We are, one mind. So the city cannot force the other facility to close because it is on a property that is not a part of this particular rezoning. I would note that council could take note of the fact that this is the same applicant as that other property, so this is more of, even if they did not close that other facility, it would be more in the nature of an expansion of the facility, is what I'm hearing from the testimony, than a whole new facility. So that is a distinction from what you normally see when you see a distance waiver requirement. But unfortunately, we are not able to enforce it. There may be enforcement options for the neighborhood, but that would be outside of your purview and outside of your consideration in this particular hearing.
I mean, it might just be semantics, because I do believe them when they say, "Where'd you go?" It might be semantics, because I do believe them. And I know various folks, including Captain Miller. And of course, it's the Salvation Army, and they've done great work for, you know, more than a hundred years. But basically, the letter, as nice as it is, is not really enforceable. And I say this more for precedent, too, in regard to other folks who might try and give us letters like this. So you're saying it's not really enforceable. The only thing I wonder about is when people get up in front of us and swear, you know, telling the truth, and in this case, they're telling the truth that they're going to do X, Y, and Z, could that be enforceable, arguably? I mean, if they are the next petitioner who might, you know, otherwise be in that situation?
The city has some extremely limited mechanisms by which we could go after someone for submitting false testimony, but things could happen, things could change.
I just mean, would it void, perhaps void or make it voidable, the petition?
It would not. If you approve it, and there is something that we cannot enforce, we just can't enforce it. Their approval stands, and we are unable to take back any approvals that they were granted.
So we just have to go on good faith in this case. Thank you.
And I'll say, if I may, I mean, I share Councilman Dingfelder's concern, also share his good faith optimism at the moral character of Salvation Army, that I know would not bear false witness before us here today, obviously. Can I get an amen?
Amen.
I'm sure that's true, but obviously, I share that concern. There's that old saying, trust but verify, and that's always a concern, obviously, but we'll have to step out in faith, no pun intended, so, if we approve it, obviously. Anyone else move to close? Oh, no, we need, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, we need, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, and nothing further from the applicant? Okay.
If the only, I hear you, uh, not, certainly not here to perjure myself and I don't believe Captain Miller is either. Um, but on top of that, there's trust and verify, as you said, but there's also the financial aspects of this too. Uh, I'm happy to get Captain Andy up to, up here to testify to that, which is simply the Salvation Army has no desire nor the monetary means to operate these two facilities. So really the, the work and the money that's needed to renovate 1603 is contingent upon their ability to not only sell the parcels that are currently being marketed, but this Red Shield Lodge as well. And they simply just don't have the funds to operate the Red Shield Lodge as well as 1603. Um, so again, there's, there's truth and there's money. Um, I hope we're, I, I'm confident we're speaking the truth, but also they don't have the money to do, to do both.
Just to add that, Captain Andy Miller, 1603 North Florida. Uh, three years ago, we were housing a hundred more people than we are today. We downsized, we eliminated 50 positions. We've now had our first two years of living in the black financially. There's no chance that we could accommodate, like, believe me, I have members of my board behind me, there's no way that we'll be able to sustain those two types of programs. We've been through a strategic plan, we've been through a mission planning study, significant studies that have led us to a place that said this is the right side for the Salvation Army in Tampa.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, next we move onward to public comment for item number, items number four and five regarding the Salvation Army. If you're here to publicly comment and you are able to stand up, please do so. And, uh, how many folks are here going to comment? If you could raise your hands. One, two. Okay, great. Uh, I guess we'll go one, two, three. Go ahead, sir.
Carl Johnson, 1609 North Franklin Street. I have owned commercial property and owned a commercial business in the North Franklin Street Business District area for the last 11 years. I've seen the neighborhood go through some great changes, uh, most of them for the better. Uh, when I first moved into that area, it was myself, Robertson Billiards at the far end of Franklin Street and Oceanic Market at the other, and all of the buildings were vacant and, um, a sizable number of homeless population. We all recognize the homeless population and that something needs to be done. We, the commercial property, uh, owners and business owners have really gone out on the limb with that area financially and have sunk large sums of money trying to regentrify that area. And we are seeing that change take place. Last year alone, City Council and, um, the Downtown Partnership asked us to be a part of the new special services district and we agreed to that, so that we are now part of downtown. I think when we look at rezoning requests, we have to look at the big picture and where a neighborhood is moving. And I'm not so sure that this is in the best interest of that neighborhood and of Tampa Heights. Um, I'm not hearing Tampa Heights here as a whole endorsing this whole concept. What we're requesting here, uh, not we, what Salvation Army is requesting here is for a, a PD rezoning for a professional residential treatment facility. Now what we have to bear in mind is that is all-inclusive. That's alcohol, substance abuse, medical treatment. I mean, this, this is a big thing. It's not just saying, okay, we want to house some homeless people. This, this is bringing more problems into the area that we're already struggling with and have been, not for years, but for decades. So I, I'm, I'm questioning the whole concept and the logic of taking a building that currently has 40 beds in it and we're going to quadruple that requirement. And I understand about the reduction in the parking if you allow them to increase the beds to that many because I'm sure 95% of those people don't have motorized vehicles. But then again, if we're going to allow a special services district to start increasing intensity for this kind of care, I have concerns. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, ma'am.
Esteemed Councilman, my name is Maureen Arel. I too am a property owner in the neighborhood, uh, through my entity A2 LLC. I own the properties at 1701 and 1702 North Franklin Street directly across from the Red Shield Lodge and down the street from the, um, property in question. I came to voice my support for this project. I believe in the power of redevelopment to shape communities and I believe in progress, not perfection. I am not saying that I think this is the highest and best use for this property, but what I am saying is taking five tax-exempt parcels or real estate portfolios and consolidating them into one and then releasing the other four portfolios for redevelopment is progress. And I speak from experience. I have sent an email to all of you outlining some of the investments that I have made since 2014 when I purchased these buildings. And by the way, many of you probably know my tenant, the Hall on Franklin. Collectively, we have invested $3 million in a property that was dilapidated and very close to being, um, condemned. My tenant, uh, we pay $35,000 in advilorm taxes. It has gone up 300% since my purchase in 200, 2014. We currently spend $13,000 a year with the city on solid waste. My tenant has $6 million in sales for his first year, which is all subject to sales tax for the state. He hires 49 employees, each have an average salary of $22,000. His payroll last year was over a million dollars. This is one property because the other is a, is a parking lot, which was redeveloped because we believe in the neighborhood. My tenant and myself were diverse. I'm a gay woman, he's an African-American, and we take pride in having an establishment that serves the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, sir. And just so we know, anyone else here to publicly comment on items four or five?
Thomas Rogers, Robertson Billiard Supplies, corner of 7th and Franklin since 1930. Been there, this will be the fourth generation, my daughter's behind me. Uh, we've got a lot of experience with the Salvation Army and, uh, most of it has not worked out from the altruistic standpoint that they present. And although it's not a bad, uh, uh, statement in and of itself, but i- if it, if altruism doesn't work out and it turns into something else, then where it leaves us is in a bad place. And we've seen it there. When the treatment facility was, uh, zoned where it currently is, what happened in reality is that $7 a bed was charged by the Salvation Army and there's some matching funds that come from the government. Make no mistake about it, it's a money-making operation. These guys know how to make money. And, uh, behind the scenes, if they do it with, uh, good intentions, that's the altruism. The reality is how we live in our neighborhood. Those people that don't have $7, panhandle. Over the years, we've had things from our cars that were broken into tried to be sold back to us for the same $7. On and on, it, it just goes on and on. Uh, I resent the inference that the Tampa Heights Civic Association is completely behind this as, uh, it has been somewhat subtly presented. I'm sure if you polled the Tampa Heights Civic Association, you'd, you'd, you'd get a more real feel of that situation. This will make the largest homeless facility on the west coast of Florida. And to put that in a neighborhood that's already suffered with it for 40 to 50 years and change the zoning from 1,200 feet to 390 feet and, and go through all these gyrations, why don't we just let it lie where it is? I think the Salvation Army will sell all these properties for a good sum of money and, and go on somewhere and give us a little blue sky. Uh, we've been suffering, you wouldn't even, couldn't even imagine, uh, some of the things I've seen and happened to our lives and businesses there. There's fights, you know, they, they try hard, but they're the last business there that has a barbed wire fence around it, so they know their own customers. You know, there's no, there's no fences anywhere else. In closing, it's time for a change. We need to move ahead. They've stopped all the public feeding. That was good. It is a time for the cities to, uh, to be consistent. It's been stated that it is inconsistent with, uh, current laws. I don't think we should change those. And, uh, they're not good to push these numbers around. They're there for a reason and I believe if we, uh, okay.
And, and sir, let me interrupt you if I may, since, um, this is actually for two hearings and Salvation Army used part of their time. I'll give you one another minute to finish your remarks.
Yeah, well, that, that's good. That was one of my questions. I'm really nervous about this because I've seen what the reality is and the altruism. And, uh, I, I highly urge you guys to, uh, there, there are some people that are supposed to be here, Mr. Cass Schuler, Cass and Schuler and whatnot, they're, believe me, they're watching closely. And I think we, I think we should just stick with the laws and the zoning regulations that we have and let the chips fall where they may. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public comment on items four or five? Okay, rebuttal?
Sure, absolutely. Again, Truitt Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. Just taking those comments, which I appreciate, both, uh, their statements as well as their passion, but, uh, as far as Mr. Johnson's on this not being in the best interest of the community, I really think when you take a broader view of this and you look at the assets that will go back for redevelopment as opposed to being owned by Salvation Army, further the consolidation into one location, which will be secure as opposed to spread out, that that is simply just incorrect in all due respect. Secondly, Mr. Johnson threw up a number of 40 beds. And just to clarify that, 1603 with the special use to approval that I showed you was granted 40 beds through that. The existing Red Shield Lodge has 145 beds. Add those two locations together, you're at 185. What we're proposing, again, with forcing you guys to take the leap of faith that we're going to do what we say, is a max of 172 beds. So it's actually a net reduction. Uh, Andy used the term or used the number, 120 people currently being served at Red Shield Lodge. That is what they would like to also service at 1603. The 172 number is the maximum capacity given a freeze, a hurricane, or some other natural disaster. Uh, their ultimate goal would be to serve zero.
Yes.
Um, but when you look at those numbers, I do think it's important, he raised the number of, of the 40. If you take that and add it to the 145 that are currently being served, it's 185 and we're having a net reduction to 172. Um, so with that, the other comments were operationally based. I'm going to let Andy, uh, answer those as well as his conversations, both with the Neighborhood Association as well as some of the people that, uh, the gentleman from Robertson Billiards referenced.
Thank you very much. Captain Andy Miller, 1603 North Florida. Glad to address some of these concerns. Of course, we appreciate the passion that comes from our, the people who've dissented from this idea in general. And we've worked, we've worked hard. And I'll say, I could have done better with the businesses. I've worked really hard with Tampa Heights Civic Association and I've been at their meetings and board meetings regularly. And it wasn't until recently that I realized that I need to be closer connected here. I did try to visit Robertson's. I talked to Alana, uh, the gentleman and spokeswoman's daughter. I, um, did have a great conversation with, uh, Michael Cass, who's not opposing us and he, he, yeah, after a conversation of finding out what we're doing, isn't opposing us. So I did speak with Mr. Carl as well. Um, can't remember your last name at this point, but here's what, what we have. Also, just, just so you know, there is no longer $7 a night. That was stopped as soon as I arrived. We do not charge anybody to come in. There isn't paying.
Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me?
If you, sir, he did not interrupt you when you were speaking. If you do that again, you will be escorted out. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I, I'm aware that there were years of operation where the Salvation Army used an older model of sheltering and that came, that was even up to the time I arrived. When I arrived, I realized we were not using best practices. And so we now, how we stopped that, that amount, we do not charge anything to people who come. Occasionally we have people when they left and gotten a job and come back, they actually want to pay, pay something, make a donation to us. It's a little bit different. Here's what I want you to know clearly from me, nothing changes within our operation. We just want to use the, the same operation that we have going on in the Red Shield Lodge right now, which doesn't require any sort of licensing from the state. Instead, we want to do that exact same service, which is making a great impact in our community in the 1603 building. That is our primary desire. We won't be doing drug treatment. We'll just be doing our basic case management that helps people get from the street to their feet and get into permanent housing. That's ultimately our goal. I want to do also another corrective. I know that there's another facility that offers more sheltering because it's another Salvation Army's facility in St. Pete, which has more than 250 people stay a night. So it's not exactly accurate, the west coast, we'd be the largest on the west coast. Because I know I'm new to Tampa, but I still think St. Pete is west of Tampa.
Again, Truitt Gardner, just in closing, I know we're asking you guys to, to take a leap of faith. Um, and just to give you a little bit of support, we did our own research into the Conference of Plan and there are a couple of provisions that apply. This is the, the housing section of the Conference of Plan. And if I may, uh, what it states in the preamble is new, new construction has increased the housing stock in Tampa. However, the need for housing for the elderly, the mentally and physically challenged, the homeless and veterans is growing every day. Increasingly, the lack of affordable units with supportive services is placing special needs populations at risk of becoming homeless. And then to that end, there are two specific, there are multiple policies that you can really read into, but two that I think really address it squarely, um, which is policy 1.1.11, promote the preservation and development of a sufficient supply of housing affordable to extremely low-income individuals and households with children in order to reduce or prevent homelessness. And then policy 1.1.12, provide opportunities throughout the city for emergency shelters and transitional housing for people who are homeless. And that's what I believe we're doing. Again, we're happy to answer any questions. Sure. The last one I read is policy 1.1.12.
Thank you, sir. Anything further?
That's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from council? Councilman Dingfelder?
What's jumping out at me based upon neighbor, neighbors' comments and then the rebuttal? And I don't know who to ask, is either legal or LaShawn. Is the activity, the activity that, that is being proposed? Because on the one hand, uh, the petition speaks to residential treatment, but then the flip side is, uh, Captain Miller testifies that there be no treatment, just beds. And I'm, I'm wondering, and it is a PD, right? So, so if it's a PD, I guess this question also for legal, um, if they're volunteering that that's the proposed use, just beds, no treatment, is that already a condition on the PD or can it be a voluntary condition on the PD? And I'm not necessarily concerned again about the Salvation Army and the veracity of what Captain Miller had to say, but if they sold the building to another treatment provider, then they could take advantage of that and we'd have a different situation.
Um, yes, Councilman. LaShawn Dot, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. So the use of professional residential facility encompasses lodging. So what we look at is their overall use. So the applicant has stated they will provide lodging and they're also providing other services. Um, that all falls under the use of professional residential facility. If they did not provide those other services, um, which are kind of medically related, um, then they could fall under the congregate living facility designation.
Right.
So everything they've stated falls under that use.
Right. So then my question, perhaps to legal then is, okay, they've got a set of uses, this is the best category that we can find for them in terms of PD, professional residential treatment facility. It's the best category we've got in terms of what they're proposing. But can, based upon their testimony, can we carve out some uses with additional condition on the PD? He said, he said he doesn't want to do alcohol treatment on, at the location or drug, I assume drug treatment at the location. If that's what they're volunteering to do, why wouldn't we add it as a condition?
That is not a distinction that can be made. Uh, a lodging facility, a congregate living facility, um, or a professional residential facility, um, are the only that, for a myriad of reasons, but perhaps most on point, our code definitions have to be used in any conditions that we place on uses. So it has to be a So it has to be a code use. And those individual uses are not defined in our code. Our code only speaks to a professional residential facility or a congregate living facility. So those are the only distinctions or uses that could be listed in this particular sense.
Even though it's a PD and we usually have great flexibility on PDs in terms of conditions?
You do have great flexibility on PDs. However, the uses that are listed on a site plan must be, or must be interpreted to be uses that are listed in the land development code. You cannot create a brand-new use. For example, it can't be martini bar. That's not an allowed use. It has to say, you know, bar or, you know, what have you. It has to be a use that is listed or that is defined in our code.
It just doesn't seem to make sense to me, and I'm sorry if I'm being dense, why you couldn't, I understand why you can't add additional uses, but why they can't voluntarily scale back on some of the uses?
That, that use limitation, the only use limitation that our zoning office can apply is a use that is defined in our code. That is the only thing that is listed in 27-156, the table there. That is the only thing that is defined, that is the only thing that they can enforce, is a use that's listed in our code. They can't then peel back and into those individual specifics of the use.
Maybe we need to revisit that in the code.
You could, you could make additional definitions for your code through land development regulations. In this particular instance, different types of lodging facilities, different types of congregate care facilities, is not a legal distinction that we are allowed to make. That is federal law. We have to treat them all the same.
Councilman Gudes?
When I look at Mr. Gardner's last memorandum there with some statues on there, when it dealt with providing shelter for homeless individuals, how does that fare in there? Because I'm hearing different uses, but when he presents to me on this scan here, he's presenting something else. So I'm getting a little confused here when we're talking about the use of codes, but yet we talk about we're providing shelter for homeless folks, providing shelter for individuals in need. So how do we weigh that? Because I'm getting a little confused when we talk about congregate living, medical, and now he shows me homelessness in the statute there. How does that tie in? Or how do we define what is, what is going to be the use? Because to me, if you're not doing these other things, he's defining it as, will it be used as a homeless shelter or emergency shelter for homeless people?
So I don't believe we have a homeless shelter definition in our land development code. So that is not a separate distinction that we could make. I would also say that, in general, in the law, if people are living in groups of unrelated individuals, the reasons why they're living in groups of unrelated, of unrelated individuals is not a question that we are allowed to ask. We must treat them all the same. So if a group of 10 homeless people are living together, that is treated the same as a group of 10 older people that are living together is treated the same as a group of older people, or people that are living together for various reasons. The only question we're asking is how many of those people are going to live there? It's the only question we're allowed to ask. And that's, that's the distinction that's made in our code. There is a further distinction for whether services are being provided. And I think you're hearing here that there are services provided. So that is a further distinction that our code makes. But again, the individual reasons why those people are living in a group facility is not a question we're allowed to ask.
Anyone else? Jeff, do you want to speak?
Council LaShawn Dot. When it comes to providing housing or shelter, there are uses...
And I'm sorry, the name, please.
Oh, LaShawn Dot.
I'm sorry.
That's a...
It's the only one who says it so quickly.
So when it comes to providing shelter and housing, there are uses that are defined within the zoning code. So if the applicant is providing housing, we have dwelling definitions within the code. So either they're dwellings and they're providing housing units, whether it's residential multifamily dwellings, they could provide if they so desired. But when you add the additional services that are offered through the Salvation Army, that puts it into a different category. And typically, the occupant is obtaining some type of state license to go along with that. So they're not just providing housing, say apartments, in a multifamily dwelling unit. They're providing more services than that. So that's how we define what they would be classified as under the zoning use table.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions? Okay. I just wanted to briefly comment on something that I noticed in terms of, I guess, a distinction on services that we're being asked to make by certain individuals, et cetera, et cetera. You know, when you look at the Tampa Heights area and what's happened, I always see a distinction between redevelopment and reinvestment. Redevelopment seeks to, or redevelopment seeks to essentially change the character of a neighborhood. Reinvestment seeks to make investments in the neighborhood and put the people who live there first. I see this as part of reinvestment. There's, there's a lot of businesses here that serve a lot of folks who have a lot of money prospectively to give. There's the business of something that's close to my heart, the business of law, where people pay attorneys three, $400, maybe even more dollars an hour for legal services. There's the business of education. Stetson College of Law, where you pay $120,000 to get a chance to pass the Florida bar and become an attorney. There's the business of food, where you pay $20 to have a plate of food. There's the business of coffee, where you pay sometimes up to what are minimum wages an hour to have a latte. Well, Salvation Army is in the business of compassion. And I use the term business. I don't mean for profit or anything like that. They're in the business of people, of putting people first. That is, to me, a liberally stated business, quote unquote. I don't mean in terms of a profit, just an endeavor, an endeavor that is entitled to deference in any kind of a community. And to ask us to make such, in my respectful opinion, a frivolous distinction based upon what is frankly a faith-based endeavor by this organization is just not something that I must, can agree with respectfully. So just something I wanted to comment on. Thank you. May I have a motion to close?
Yes.
Motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Gudes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Maniscalco, are you comfortable reading item number four, sir?
All right. This is for the vacating of the alley. So I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning alleyway, right-of-way line west of Florida Avenue, south of East Seventh Avenue, and north of East Henderson Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in Section 1 hereof, subject to certain easement reservations, covenant conditions, and restrictions more particularly set forth herein. Providing effective date, I believe that the petitioner has met its burden of proof to provide competent and substantial evidence that this is consistent.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Councilman Gudes?
I'm sorry.
And yes. Counselman Dingfelder?
Motion carried with Dingfelder voting no.
Thank you, sir.
Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Okay. And Councilman Gudes, are you comfortable, sir, reading item number five?
Yes, sir. I have a REZ 19 as 24. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 1603 North Florida Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1. From zoning district classifications, CI, commercial, intensive, and RM24 residential multifamily, to PD, planned development, business, and professional office, and professional residential treatment facility, providing effective date.
Second.
We have a mo, and...
I believe we have more of a motion.
Boilerplate.
What is that?
If I can, just direct your attention to, to plan development with regard to this statement and any additional information. Also, if you can, sir, you might want to address the waiver criteria as well. Thank you.
All right. I move an ordinance and direct revision shown, or revision sheet made by, as the petitioner has met the burden of proof, provide competent and substantial evidence that the development and conditional, condition, and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and city could simply that the design or purpose development is unique and therefore is in need of waivers. With waivers granted, the purpose and intent of this article stated in Section 2736, the waiver, if allowed, will be substantially, if you're with or prudent of the rights of others, why it will be effective by allowance of the waiver.
Okay. And Councilman Maniscalco, are you amenable to the amendment? I would assume?
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excuse me, counsel. Also, can you add the site plan revisions?
With the site plan revisions.
Okay.
Motion carried with Dingfelder voting no. Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m. And Chair, the motion to close for the vacating, was that also a motion to close for the rezoning?
Yes, yes, for four and five. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Duane, as always. Okay, next we move on to item number seven.
Council LaShawn Dot, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number seven is REZ 1957. It's for the property located at 2911 North Boulevard. The request is from RS50 residential single family to PD, planned development for business professional office. The applicant is Scott Haas.
And if everyone could please clear the room as soon as you all can, we have another hearing forthcoming. Thank you, everyone.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. Um, apologize. This is also in Central Tampa Planning District. It's also in Tampa Heights. So for a moment, I thought I had the wrong report up here. It's also within the Tampa Heights Urban Village, Heart Route 7 serves a subject site, and it's also an evacuation zone D. This is a request, as LaShawn stated, for a PD that would allow a professional office on the site. We have North Boulevard to the north. This is Plymouth Park. I have Graham Elementary School right here along St., North Massachusetts. And then this is West West Street. This is an office use, this is an office use that's in character, a couple of office uses along the subject site. Predominantly, the area is residential 10, that's the orange, but the subject site itself is residential 20. It's a little hard to tell because it's such a small site and we have the, the number over it, but it's residential 20, it's that darker brown, it's the same thing that's present to the south. This is the public, that's the elementary school that I pointed out earlier. So office uses are, can be considered under the residential 20 future land use category if those meet the locational criteria in the comprehensive plan. We did find that this met the locational criteria. The North Boulevard, which is where this is located, is identified as an arterial. The criteria states it needs to be located on a collector or higher, that is higher than a collector. Not only that, but there is residential office zoning adjacent to the north of the subject site as well as further south along North Boulevard. So we did find that this already had the character of the office development along this portion of North Boulevard. Lastly, the plan development is proposing vehicular access from an alleyway, which is encouraged by the comprehensive plan, land use policy 15.3.2. The comprehensive plan also encourages redevelopment projects in urban villages that contribute to the mixed-use nature of the village and its traditional livable community, which would include commercial, neighborhood commercial and these office uses. So we did find that this would not have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood and it would be comparable and compatible with the surrounding development pattern and consistent with the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Thank you.
Council LaShawn Dot, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Council, there is a correction I'd like to make on the staff report regarding the date of the site plan that's listed. It has April 22nd, 2019, but the revised site plan was submitted on June 24th, 2019. So that date correction is needed on the record. This, this application requests a total of three waivers. One is to reduce the required parking from four spaces to three spaces. The other waiver is to 27-283.12 is to allow the reduction in the drive-out width from 24 feet to 19 feet. And the third waiver is to 27-284 is to reduce the required buffer from 15 feet with a six-foot masonry wall to three feet on the south and five feet on the east. So the request is, the total lot area for the property is approximately 4,800 square feet. This site is located east of North Boulevard, south of West West Street, and north of West Plaza Place. The subject property, property currently contains a residential use. The structure consists of 1,333 square feet and the applicant is proposing and requesting the use of a business professional office. The request is proposing to utilize the existing structure and maintaining that building footprint with access from the alley on site. So this is an aerial of the site. This is the site located in red. And this is North Boulevard to orient you on this map. And this is West West Street, that's to the north. And this site is surrounded with the commercial use to the north and to the west. And this is vacant residential to the south and residential single family to the east of the site. And I have the zoning map. So this is the property identified in the green striping. So this is North Boulevard. This is West Street. So this property has the residential office, the RO zoning, to the north and to the west. And to the east and to the south, it has the zoning of the RS50 zoning. As you see, a couple of PDs, a PD to the north and then a residential office further south. And this is a picture of the site on Boulevard. That's the front of the site. And then heading north, this is north of the site. This is on the corner. This is a little further north, northwest corner of Boulevard and West. This is the view looking east on West Street. This is east of the site. This is on Woodrow. This is another single-family residential east of the site, also on Woodrow, another single-family residential. Coming back around, this is south of the site. This is the vacant lot. This is on Boulevard. And this is west of the site, which is a commercial use. And this is across Boulevard to the west. This is the site plan which was submitted. So this is Boulevard that's located on the left side of this picture. So this is the main entryway for pedestrians. This is the structure itself. And this is the parking, which would be accessed from the alley. And these are the, they have the 18A space and the additional two parking spaces located on site. And the development review compliance staff has reviewed the request, finds the request inconsistent with City of Tampa land development code. The inconsistent finding is related to the transportation waivers that are requested for the site. And within the staff report, counsel, you'll find on page two, transportation's finding of inconsistent regarding those waivers. There are site plan modifications requested also between first and second readings should counsel decide to approve this request this evening. And you'll see those listed within the staff report also under planning and design and development coordination. Natural Resources has also requested site plan modifications and they have a finding of consistent. And I'm available if you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening, counsel and Councilman Vera.
Scott.
Scott Haas. And I'm an attorney in Tampa. Been practicing for 20 years. And my hope is to get approval for this. The lot itself is rather narrow, so I do need a waiver for the parking from four down to three. And I'm certainly happy to do whatever I need to, to make this work. I live literally four blocks away. I moved to Riverside Heights, which is right abutting at Tampa Heights. So like I said, I'm willing to do what I can to meet whatever, whatever the city is looking for. Right to the north of this property is a law office. I can't think of his name right now, but he does workers' comp. That's not a competing area that I practice, but it's literally right next door on North Boulevard. I can tell you there is a lot of traffic on North Boulevard, even at night. And we were running it short-term. And the complaints, we, the one complaint we always got was that front bedroom, it's difficult for people to sleep. So I'm hoping this can be changed to commercial so I could use it... So, I'm hoping this can be changed to commercial so I could use it as a law office. And like I said, I'd respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Is anyone, anything further? I don't want to cut you off, sir. Anything further for your time, or?
No, I think that's it. I appreciate the input from the staff report, and I've gone over it, and I'm certainly wanting and willing to make those changes.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to publicly comment on item number seven? If so, please come forward at this time, three minutes. We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goodes. All in favor? Any opposed? I guess, Councilman Carlson, are you comfortable, sir, taking item number seven?
Move file number REZ 1957. Ordinance being presented for first reading. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2911 North Boulevard in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS 50 Residential Single Family to PD Plan Development Office Business Professional, providing an effective date. Which one of these am I supposed to read from? Yeah. And as the petitioner, and I do this because the petitioner has met its burden of proof to provide competent and substantial evidence that development as condition and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code. Was there an additional waiver or something I need to add?
Site plan revisions.
And including the site plan revisions.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried with Ding Felder being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on September 5th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Next, we move to item number nine.
Good evening again, counsel, Kristin Moore, Legal Department. Just for your general information, this was previously brought to City Council, and it was the subject of a statutory procedure, procedure known as the Burt Harris Act. There was a recommendation from the magistrate in that Burt Harris proceeding to approve this. It came back to City Council and was not approved. So, I have that history. I can explain further as we go through the process, but I did want to give you that history, that this was previously requested, went through the Burt Harris process. There is a special magistrate recommendation for approval, but it was not approved by City Council. So, that is the history, and that happened in 2017.
Counsel Lashawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. And counsel, item number nine is REZ 1963. This is a new application that is presented to you this evening. This is for 910 South Sterling Avenue. The request is from RS 75 Residential Single Family to PD Plan Development for Residential Single Family Development. The applicant is Gaylord, is Jason Lindau.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. We're going to the South Tampa Planning District for this case. This is located in the Gulfview neighborhood. The closest public transit stop is located about .2 miles away to the west along South Dale Mayberry Highway, Hart Route 19 and 36. Service subject site, it's within a level D evacuation zone. The Carl Dickinson Tennis Center is located about a half mile away to the west of the subject site. So, predominant surrounding area is single-family detached residential with the commercial uses along South Dale Mayberry Highway. So, the subject site is outlined in purple. It's along South Sterling Avenue. We can see some, I know it's hard with the tree coverage, but those are single-family detached homes. See some pools in the aerial. This is the Wright's Gourmet House along South Dale Mayberry Highway. This is a plaza with a bank. This is the country, the Palmasia Country Club Golf Course to the south. Adopted future land use of the subject site is residential six. That is less intensive than residential 10. It allows six dwelling units to the acre. It's, it's single-family detached, not consideration of anything else in this category. As you can see, it's predominantly this neighborhood. There is a cul-de-sac across the street. This is residential 20. It provides that transition because this is the Community Mixed Use 35, which allows commercial along South Dale Mayberry Highway. So, there's a little bit of that transition, but the whole neighborhood is residential six. The green is the, um, the golf course to the south. It's rec open space is the future land use category. So, the proposed rezoning in front of you today would allow for consideration of two single-family residences. The overall density for this parcel, if we put two single-family residences on it, would be 5.26 units per acre. You can have up to six is the overall density allowed, so they are within that, and they're meeting that future land use category density. As you know, a principal objective of the city's comprehensive plan is to ensure that there is an adequate supply of housing available to meet the needs and preferences of the city's population. And then this would increase the number of residential units on the property, which would meet that objective in the comprehensive plan. So, Planning Commission didn't have any, um, we found this consistent, and we found that it met the policy direction, and that it was comparable, compatible with the surrounding development pattern. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Counsel Lashawn Doc, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. With this request, this PD request for residential single-family detached, there are no waivers with this PD. The property contains a total of 16,500 square feet. So, this is part of Lot 3, Block 28 of the revised map of Southland subdivision. This property is located south of Dale Mayberry Highway, west of South Heims Avenue, and south of West Waterus Avenue, east of South Sterling, on the east side of Sterling Avenue. So, on the plan, which I'll put up for you on the Elmo, so this is Sterling Street. This is the property under the request, which is outlined in red. So, just to orient you, so Lot A has been identified as the northern lot. So, that lot would contain a width of 60 feet in width, and it would contain a depth of 137.5 feet. And then Lot B, which is identified here, this southern lot, would contain the same width of 60 feet and the depth at 137.5 feet. So, this is located within an RS 75 zoning district, counsel, and in the RS 75 zone, you would be required normally to have a minimum lot width of 75 feet of frontage, and these two lots requested would have a frontage of 60 feet each. So, that is why this PD is required. And I have also an aerial of the site. So, this is Sterling Avenue. This is Waterus Avenue located here, and this is the site that's outlined in red. So, as you can see, this site is surrounded with single-family residential development. This is the zoning map for this property. So, the property is identified in green and is surrounded with RS 75 zoning to the north, south, east, and west of the property. And then I have pictures of the site. So, this is the site on Sterling. That's one half of the site, and this is the other half. So, this is more the north end of the site. This is west of the site, which is across the street. This is another view west of the site. This is at the southwest corner at Waterus. This is the view looking west on Palmasia. This is north of the site. This is at the southeast corner of Waterus and Sterling. That's also north of the site, and we're swinging around south of the site. This is to the east. That's on Franklin, that's looking west. And then this is east of the site. And counsel, on page three of the staff report, you'll find the staff findings. So, the DRC staff reviewed the request and had a finding of inconsistent. They're relating to natural resources findings and also relating to Planning, Design and Development Coordination's finding of inconsistent, and this is related to Comp Plan Policy 9.3.8. You will note within the site plan, what I have listed is that the revised map of Southland subdivision, it was originally platted in 1915 with lots that varied in width from 300 to 307 feet. It varied in length from 300 to 305 feet. The overall subdivision included 49 blocks located in between Manhattan Avenue to Heims Avenue and Swan Avenue to San Jose. The subject property is located on Block 28 of the subdivision. It's on a portion of Lot 3. The subject applicant seeks to create two buildable lots. So, with the overall analysis on our conforming map that we have here. So, this, this is the subject property that's outlined in black. This is Sterling Avenue. This is Waterus Avenue. So, taking the distance for the study area and looking at the current zoning of the RS 75 in the area, what we did was took the analysis, it was a total of 114 lots that were included in the analysis. Also included in the analysis were blocks to the south, which are part of the Gulfview Estates revised subdivision. So, it actually includes another subdivision, some of the lots that are within this analysis area. So, the subdivision in the area south of Neptune, it was originally platted in 1942 with lots that varied in width from 54.5 feet to 315 feet. Only eight of the 49 lots within that subdivision were 60 feet or less and located at the northwest corner of Sterling and San Miguel. The remaining 41 lots within that subdivision ranged from 75 feet to 315 feet, and 30 lots or more than 50% were platted at 75% and remain developed with that pattern. So, overall, of the 114 lots that were developed, 40 of the lots have been developed with a minimum lot width of 100 feet or greater. 36 of the lots have been developed with a width between 75 feet and 79 feet. 16 of the lots have been developed with a width between 80 and 99 feet. Seven of the lots have been developed with a width between 60 to 64 feet. Seven of the lots have been developed between 50 to 54 feet. Six of the lots were developed with a width of 65 to 69 feet. One lot is developed at the width between 70 and 74 feet, and one at a width of 34 feet or less. So, within the subject block, to do a further analysis, there were 11 parcels within the block. So, of the 11, 100% of those lots have been developed at a width of 75 feet or greater. And now, those are the areas on the map which are pink, dark red, and red. The width of the lots on the subject block ranged from 78 feet to 125 feet, with six of the 11 lots at 100 feet or greater, and four at 80 feet or greater. So, there's only one 78-foot lot, which is located on the southwest corner of the block. So, given that analysis, staff finds the proposed configuration of the two 60-foot lots in the center of the block is inconsistent with the development pattern of the subject block and the block face, as well as the overall development pattern of the area. Also, counsel, Brian Knox is here with Natural Resources. He has comments regarding trees on-site, and I'd like to have him review those comments with you. And I'm available if you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Councilman Goodes?
I understand legally, 2017, counsel voted against this proposal, correct? And then it went to magistrate, and magistrate said that it should be approved, correct?
Correct. Kristin Moore, Legal Department. Yes, there was an application, I think it was initially for a, um, a Euclidean zoning district, but it was amended to a PD. And there was a full request for relief hearing on it, and there was a recommendation from the special magistrate to, for City Council to approve that. That was set for hearing in front of City Council, but City Council denied the application again.
I didn't hear that last portion, Ms. Moore, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear that last portion, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that last statement you made.
So, it was, it was set for hearing in front of City Council again, and then City Council once again turned it down.
So, it's been turned down twice by counsel?
It was turned down twice by counsel.
Even after the magistrate's made his ruling?
Correct.
Where we stand with that legally?
So, legally, this is a closed application. I mention it because the applicant did bring up the fact that this previous process had occurred. So, I wanted City Council to understand fully what had happened in that particular process. But this process is closed, this is a brand-new application, and so you will hear this application the same as any other rezoning application that comes before you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ding Felder? Question, if I may, that May 2017, just out of my own personal curiosity, what was that vote? If you have that?
I don't have that in front of me. I will try to look that up.
Okay. I got in in December of 16, and that first year was a blow. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Brian Knox, City of Tampa Natural Resources. As stated earlier, the lot, it's a single lot, proposed to be split into two lots, and with that, there is a tree of concern that's on the lot. That tree is on Lot B. It's a 45-inch live oak. It was rated in good quality, B8, by our Natural Resources staff, and it was determined that in order to keep the tree, that you would have to build around it, or you would have to go to another process to remove it. So, we asked the applicant to state the lot. The lot was staked, and at the time, the lot was staked, we went out, it was determined that to build on Lot B, what is proposed was not possible. So, there is a 20-foot protected radius around the tree as shown here. That 20-foot is the minimum allowed distance for a grand tree. However, Lot, Lot B's house was proposed as a two-story home. And with that, an excessive amount of canopy would be removed, ultimately leading to the tree being removed. So, as we determined that the lot was not buildable, we asked the applicant to try to reconfigure the lot, build, or try another alternative design to build, or consider an alternative measure for getting the lot, or the house you're proposing on Lot B. And so, with that, we had some concerns about whether or not he could build the house at one story as well. So, we didn't have the full amount of information that we needed to make a decision for Lot B. And knowing that, we asked the applicant if he would like to move forward with the case and continue. The applicant agreed to continue, and so here we are with the information that is in front of you. A 45-inch grand tree with a 20-foot minimum protected radius with a proposed two-story house that would lead to excessive removal of the canopy for the 45-inch grand tree. There are additional concerns on the lot. Those concerns involve the driveway. The driveway requires a minimum 20-foot radius from the 34-inch tree that's shown here on Lot B. There's a heavy amount of encroachment there, and with that, we still, we weren't able to come to a decision on that and make, and come to, you know, a solid conclusion on whether or not you can put a driveway that close to that tree as well. Throughout that process, we found it inconsistent. If you have any other questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Councilman Goodes?
So, basically, the petitioner is being denied because of two trees, basically.
Certainly.
Basically, the petition being denied because of two trees, correct?
By Natural Resources. We found it inconsistent because there's two trees on a lot, and it's a two-story- We found it inconsistent because there's two trees on a lot and it's a two-story home.
Any further questions, Councilman?
May I ask Ms. Mora a question, please? Ms. Mora, we're not here this evening to talk about the trees. We're talking, we're here this evening to talk about the proposed development of this lot.
You are here this evening to talk about the proposed development of this lot. One distinction that happens in this case that does not necessarily happen in other cases is they are asking for permission to build two lots. They are not currently allowed that by the zoning. So they do have to rezone in order to have two lots.
My, I guess my point is, is that the trees that are going to be affected is going to have to be permitting and they would have to go through some other, whether it be VRB or another thing, to make sure that those trees can either be cut down, paid for mitigation or whatever. But we're just here on the, the PD.
I understand your question. The tree removal, I do not believe is requested as a part of this application. So yes, they would have to go through the proper procedures, either the new statutory procedure or a procedure in our code for removal.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, Councilman Carlson and Councilman Mora.
Just to follow in that before you sit down, is, is the impact on the tree competent as substantial evidence or not?
The impact on the trees occasioned by having two houses as opposed to one is appropriate for your consideration since this is a rezoning to split from one allowance for one home to allowance for two homes.
Councilman?
And you're, an opposite, looking at the amount of certain sizes of lots in certain areas, on this half a block.
Yep.
And I know you all do as a conference of something larger, but on this half a block that faces, I think that's the Palermo subdivision across from it? That's what they call it?
Oh, yes.
I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that's where it's at.
To the west.
Right. And on that, where, where you, you got the marking of the petitions right there? On that, that half a block, that whole, how many lots are the less than 75 feet?
On that side, there aren't any lots that are less than 75 feet.
None?
No, 78 feet was the smallest width.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else from council? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Jason Landau, I'm the property owner. Sterling Avenue is one block east of Dale Mayberry, which is one of the busiest highways in the city. When I had to do the notice, everybody 250 feet around, I had to notify property owners on Dale Mayberry. That's how close I am. Okay, I also had to notify people who have 50-foot wide lots. I can see 50-foot lots directly from my front door. Directly across the street from my house are seven lots. None of them are 75 feet wide, even though we have the same zoning. None of them have 75 feet wide, they're all less than that, as little as 60 feet. And none of those seven lots have even near 7,500 square feet. Now remember, I've got 8,250 square feet and the requirement is only 7,500. So I've got way more land than is required. I'm basically shy of the front footage. But directly across the street is an identical situation. And if one of those houses burnt down tonight, they would not be back in front of the council. They can pull permits immediately. I went around to all the neighbors. I have 31 letters signed by neighbors, including every neighbor in the 900 block of Sterling, across the street, my side of the street, up and down the street. Have all signed saying, "I think it's a good idea to rezone 910 Sterling, Tampa, Florida, 3369, to two residential, single-family lots." The neighbors want it, including neighbors on Franklin Avenue behind me, the guy right behind, this signed. The neighborhood wants it. To address the situation with the trees. Until we have an architect, if you look at the plan, I mean, you can, the footprint of the tree comes out of the, the building envelope. Okay? I've talked to Brian. It's totally feasible, you could build a two-story in the front, two-story in the back with a one-story connector. There's multiple ways to get around it and work with the tree. But I'm thinking it's most advisable, once we have an architect and they work around the tree, they can work with Brian and work it out. But at this point, there's no way of knowing, you know, Brian and I discussed it. There's really, we can't address it until we get to that point. But we can't get to that point unless I know that I'm going to have a lot there. So it's kind of a catch-22. I've reached out to all the neighbors, including, I see Mr. Miller's here. I've sent him emails, but I haven't heard anything back from him, one way or the other. And I know Ms. Van Dyke lives diagonally behind me. I've knocked on her door, but I haven't heard anything out of her either. So, something else I can address?
Did you want to submit that into the record or give that to council? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I just inquire?
Sure.
Sir, did you want to have council see that?
Oh, yeah, here's the letters.
Thank you.
And sir, before, do you have any further comments before you take any questions?
Well, if you want to go further down the street in the 1,000 block, I'm the 900 block, in the 1,000 block, 1,042 South Sterling is 54 feet wide. Same side of the street, just down further. 1040 South Sterling, 60 feet wide. 1038, 60 feet wide. 1036, 60 feet wide. So we're not really breaking new ground. We've got this down the street. I've got 60-foot lots right across the street with less square footage. The neighborhood thinks it's compatible. I hope you guys do too.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move to public comment on item number nine. If anyone is here to comment on item number nine, please come forward, three minutes every, each person. And am I reading the room right? There's two people to comment? Okay. Go ahead, sir, and please state your name.
Thank you. Mr. Van Dyke?
No, Ms.
Oh, pardon me. Are you Mr. Dietrich?
Oh, Miller Dietrich, right.
Dietrich. Mr. Dietrich has one name, Pat Van Dyke. I see her present. Additional minute, please, four minutes.
Go ahead, sir. State your name, please.
I had sent an email to all council members last week and I'm circulating that copy again in case you have it, so you have it in front of you. And it was to the members last Thursday I sent it. And as the Gulfview Civic Association-
Sorry, sir, did you state your name?
Miller Dietrich.
Okay.
I'm the president of the Gulfview Civic Association. Eighty-eight years the Gulfview Civic Association's been in business and I'm the first male president, so I may not be here next year. As Gulfview Association member, I'm writing in opposition to the rezoning request located 910 Sterling. The current zoning we've talked about here, you had a lot of information on this, we can go around and find out lot sizes until we're blue in the face. But that west side of Sterling, all up and down there, if we open this Pandora's box and start putting double lot, dividing up lots into 60-foot, this thing is a 60-foot lot. And then you have four cars there instead of two. And the traffic there, we're about 400 yards north of the Plant High School parking lot and so we had to put speed tables in there. It's just getting overdeveloped everywhere. So, so I've already, we've already talked about the trees, but upon reviewing the city council zoning document under planned development, it's apparent that this plan does not meet either of the two requirements outlined under PD. Number one, are characterized by unique conditions or situations which other zoning districts cannot accommodate, including, but specifically not limited to unusual physical or environmental features, transportation, access, et cetera. Or, number two, include a mixture of appropriate land uses which may not be otherwise be permitted in other districts. So we, this same, we've already mentioned, this property was disapproved by city council, I think unanimously, in November 9th in 2017. The magistrate issue, I'm not going to decide that, but council disapproved it once and then it had to come before you again and it disapproved it. I received an email from Mr. Landau, he's saying, "In reaching out to you and Gulfview Neighborhood Association, determined if there are any questions or concerns you would like me to answer or address." I wrote back to him and I said, "What are your plans for the property other than subdividing?" His answer was, "I have not really considered future plans. I thought it would be most prudent to wait and cross that bridge when I get to it." So I just think this PD definition here is not, is not being met. And these residents around them are especially, we like to prevent future rezoning, just, as I say, will happen, I can tell you real quickly, certainly in any area that doesn't have trees especially. So I knew the tree area was there, we saw that, but I don't know where that goes on a PD. But I just think the rezoning for this area in the, in our association is uncalled for. And the 60-foot wide lots is, and with the parking right up against the sidewalk is a safety hazard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Do you need a gentleman? My name is Frank Milliore Jr. I live at 1020 South Sterling Avenue. My wife and I bought 1020 South Sterling Avenue in 1997. We are on the block south of Neptune, on the same side of the street. I speak in opposition to the rezoning. I did some homework myself today, going online, looking at the paperwork. And I'm going to try not to replow ground that's been gone through a reading. But I pose this question, what's changed? What's changed? Exactly what came before this body has been back a second time and now a third time. And if you think about it, what's changed is you folks have changed. It's a different council. So from the petitioner's point of view, having been turned down twice, why not come back a third time? There's some new folks up there. And you operate in a quasi-judicial capacity here, right? And you're not bound by the law of the case, so to speak. But on the other hand, I think you have to ask yourselves, if this city council turned it down twice and there's not a speck of new information or anything different about this petition the third time, what does it say about us if we just decide, okay, three's a charm from the petitioner's point of view? Nothing has changed since you've turned it down. I'm not even getting into, at this point, the well-articulated objections to this rezoning. You have that and you have that analysis by your staff, which speaks for itself, and I don't know that I could articulate it a whole lot better than they did, or as this gentleman from the Neighborhood Association has. Respectfully, I'll go just a little bit on substance. If in fact, you chose to grant this petition now, you would start that process by which any number of other properties on that block could similarly seek rezoning. I mean, at the end of the day, what you have here is a property owner who simply seeks, in his own best financial interests, and, you know, I can't begrudge the gentleman his own best financial interest, to jam two houses into two small lots. And he's been told no twice and the question becomes, will a newly constituted city council come to his rescue? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else here to comment on item number nine? Okay, sir, do you have any rebuttal? Applicant?
The idea that the neighborhood is going to mysteriously be converted into multi-
Name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Landau.
Thank you.
There is only one other piece of property on Sterling that would qualify. Right next door to me is Mrs. Hatton, who I believe, I think you're addressed at 914 Sterling. Her lot is comparable to mine, also 120 feet wide. There's no other lot in that block wide enough to qualify. So the idea that we're going to have, you know, massive amounts of rezonings and, you know, density is not even remotely accurate. Okay? I mean, it can't happen. I mean, there's not enough land. And I go back to the original concept, directly across the street are seven lots, all less than 75 feet. And I don't know if you want to get into the original magistrate thing. I mean, the magistrate ruled that you couldn't deny it based on the 60-foot lots. And the idea that I'm waiting for another group to be elected, the truth is, after it happened last time, where I was turned down, I had to go back to Wisconsin, take care of my father. I've been up there for a little over two years. I came back down, that's why I'm back at it. I mean, you know, I, it's not that I waited for a new council or anything like that. I was out of town. Unfortunately, my father didn't like Florida. I couldn't get him to come down here. He insisted on passing in his own house, so I was up there. Something else I can address, questions that you may have?
Any questions from council? Apparently none. Anything further, sir? Any other comments with your time?
Well, other than the situation with the tree, once again, I think after the fact, once we have an architect, see if they can work around the tree. I mean, we have to go through a whole permit process anyway. I mean, site plans, all the rest of it. So I'm assuming that when we get to that point, the architect can deal with it and work around it that way.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. May I have a motion to close? Councilman Dean Felder.
Thank you. I do have some problems or questions in regard to the placement of the tree. Or specifically, I guess, as related to this building envelope that, that's on the, on the PD. So have they, has the develop, has the petitioner identified where the tree is, then shown this 20-foot radius, then carved around, then carved around it and therefore if we approve this PD, they would be absolutely prohibited from building outside of that building envelope regardless of what happens to the tree? Is that what I'm seeing?
Kristin Mora, Legal Department. You do pose a very interesting question. The applicant has shown a building envelope that works around the tree. It's difficult to say that there would never be a circumstance where they could expand that area, for example, if the tree did go away.
But they're not even referencing the tree as a condition of why they're carving that. I mean, it might be perhaps something we could conclude based upon the drawing, but they're not tying it to that. They're, they have voluntarily carved out that envelope. So unless they came in for an amendment to the PD, I don't know how they build, you know, outside the envelope that they volunteered.
I would say-
It's a strange thing. I've never seen that before.
I, I can't say that I, I have ever been posed this question, but that's one of the things I love about this job. This would ultimately be a question for the zoning administrator, I believe, about whether or not they are limited to that building envelope. I think there is an excellent argument that they are. But standing here today, I can't tell you exactly what the zoning administrator would conclude. It would ultimately be her interpretation. Counsel could impose a condition stating that the setbacks will be as shown in the site plan by the building envelope line, something along those lines to, which would then be a council condition. And it would limit it to that and then they would have to do some sort of amendment process- And it would limit it to that, and then they would have to do some sort of amendment process, be it a determination of an answer, well, it would be a council condition. They would have to come back in for rezoning if they were going to expand in that area. Yes.
The part on the tree that concerns me is, even though I agree with Councilman Citro, that we're not here specifically on approving or not approving the tree-
Correct.
But under the revised state law, if they had a different arborist other than ours, our arborist says it's a good, healthy tree, but if he came up with an arborist who says, "Oh, that tree's dying, and all he has to do is sign his name to that one page," then they can take it out without a permit or anything. And so that's the bad news. But the good news is, if he's carved it out on the site plan, then it seems to me, like you said, that I don't know that he can build there.
Yes. And again, without the zoning administrator here to make a final determination, it's a bit difficult for me to tell you unassailably, but yes, they have shown a building envelope there in very specific terms. It is carved out for the tree, and that may not ultimately correlate with how close natural resources may allow them to come to the tree as well. So they're putting a little bit of a risk here also to not give themselves wiggle room to work with natural resources about what that looks like.
Let me inquire with the petitioner, as long as we're still open. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Somebody drew, you or somebody drew this for you?
Yes.
You seem pretty articulate in terms of the process that you've been through a few times.
Unfortunately, yes.
You've lived in this property, I think, a long time.
Yes.
How long?
Moved in 2005.
Okay. So you're familiar with property and the tree and everything else?
Right.
What is your, what's your intent in regard to that big carve-out that we're all looking at?
Well, I did that originally because I thought that would make everybody happy. Okay? And when we did this, that was before they passed the state law. So, I mean, you're right, this is a quandary, and I'm not certain exactly the best way to address this, because you're absolutely right. In the event they find that there's something wrong with that tree, and they like to take the tree out, then do we come back in, or, I don't know?
But as of today, this is the site plan that you're asking-
That I'm submitting, right.
That you're asking us to approve, here tonight, with that carve-out.
I thought it would keep Brian happy and get everybody happy, and then it turns out that Brian's not certain whether we can do it with the tree, or we have to work around it somehow. I would just assume not have to carve out for the tree, to be honest with you.
I would think so.
And if it pleases you guys, I'd be more than happy to have it redrawn with the tree taken out, and, you know, we'll try to save it, or I don't-
Well, that's up to you. I mean, we, you know, council, our legal council always tells us, you know, we can't make those decisions about what you want to do or don't want to do.
Excuse me. I just wanted to put a little bit of information out there for, in terms of the process he would have to go through-
And name, if I may.
Oh, sorry. Brian Knox, Natural Resources. So in order to propose the tree for removal, he would have to have stated it on his plan as a waiver request. Or, given that that's not done, if this plan moves forward, he would have to go to the various review board. It's natural resources opinion, once again, that the 20-foot minimum protected radius is not enough for the grand tree. The canopy is very large, it's very low-hanging. It's enough for a one-story, but in terms of a buildable footprint, it's certainly not realistic.
Well, the last thing I'm going to say on this is, using an architect, and it probably is a way to plan two houses on this, as a PD. But right now, just doing a straight split like that, without showing any kind of detail about how the house, the two houses would fit on those two lots-
Well, that's where we show the two building envelopes.
Well, you showed two building envelopes in a very generic way.
Well, that's maximum footprint in RS-75 zoning. Those setbacks are, that's how it's set up.
Right, but once you go to a PD, you're not subject to the RS-75.
But I've stipulated those setbacks. Once again, thinking that would make everyone happy, because we haven't really, I'm trying to make as little changes as possible compared to the neighborhood.
I understand, but you can never make everybody-
Well, you can't make everybody happy, I know that.
All right.
If you want-
I think there's other ways to be more creative and do this. Perhaps if you had, if you pulled back, asked for a continuance, went to an architect, actually drew in how two smaller homes might fit on these lots, then maybe that could make the neighborhood a little happier, as opposed to two, you know, two big, two-story homes.
But once again, I have no idea what's going to be built there. I mean, I'm not intending to build these houses or anything. I mean, I'm trying to retire, guys.
Just trying. Yes, sir. Councilman Citro.
Mr. Knox, can I ask you one more question? It may be moot, but I-
Yes, sir.
It will relieve my interest. The tree in the front.
Okay.
How would it affect the driveway?
Well, the driveway would have to be reconfigured. I can't really speak on the driveway width being reduced, but I can speak on behalf of the requirements that you're required for, the protective radius in relation to the driveway. This is a 34-inch tree, that requires a minimum 20-foot radius. You can encroach five feet into that protective radius with pervious material. So if this driveway was 15 feet away from this tree, and five feet of that driveway was pervious, this driveway would be fine with natural resources.
And there is enough room on that lot to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, concerns from council before we close? Councilman Goode's.
Maybe I didn't hear the gentleman, I got a little confused. You said you don't know what you want to put on there yet, you're not ready to build or go forward, you're just bringing a plan to us for rezoning, is what you're saying, sir?
I have no plans. I mean, my intent, actually, is to sell the property and move to something that's more affordable and smaller and newer, frankly. This was built in 1950. I mean, if you guys prefer to take that buffer zone out from that tree and just do a standard footprint, and move the driveway further over, away from the 34-inch tree, I mean, we can redraw that and-
That would be up to you.
I mean, prove it subject to that, and, you know, when we do the second reading, I have it done, and bring it back in?
Well, I'll tell you what, I mean, we're about to do a motion to close, so if you, if there's any decisions that you wish to make regarding your case, this would be the time to do it. You need to take a minute to think about it?
So then, the council would prefer that I step back and re-traw?
I'm not, no, I'm saying, in other words, you've asked us in terms of what the council would wish to see, et cetera, with regards to the management of your case. That's in your hands. And I'm asking, do you, just out of deference to you as the applicant, do you want to take two minutes, a two-minute recess for you to think about it before we close? Because once we close, it's closed.
Can we take a quick poll?
No.
If I can.
Yes, sir.
Can you call Brad?
Before, before- So the petitioner has the last word. I just want to direct your attention to the purpose. What you have before you is an application, a petition for a planned development. It is a site plan controlled development. And by so doing, you're able to not have to comply with the requirements of Euclidean zoning. Your code, section 27126, which was provided to you previously, has exactly the purposes of why someone ought to be granted a site plan controlled rezoning. And that is for the purpose of particularly knowing exactly what is before you, of what is planned, hence the name planned development. So I'm going to ask council, when you do weigh the competent substantial evidence that you've been provided, you apply the nine different criteria for why you would grant a planned development, and make your decision based on whatever evidence that you heard at tonight's hearing. Thank you. And if the petitioner has any last words, please grant him that opportunity.
Yeah, sure. Do you need to take a two-minute break, sir? Do you want to speak further? I'll give you an extra minute if you wish to speak. And before, if I may, Duane, how is he on time?
Excuse me?
No, Duane, how is he on time? He's over. Okay, yep. If you want to take two or three minutes to think about it, we can go in recess for three minutes, or if you wish to have another minute-
No, let's do the recess.
Okay, I have no problem with that. We'll recess at 8:59 in five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dingfelder?
Bill here.
Goode's?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
And Vera? Here. Okay, sir, we're back. And you wish to have a few minutes to consider things. We're about to do a motion to close, after which time we will make our decision. So just wanted to see where you're going, sir.
I'm going to ask for continuance. Is that good?
And we can't, we can't tell you, we can't, we can't swing at the ball until you pitch it to us.
Okay.
So what, why, what is your rationale for the continuance? What do you intend to do with that continuance?
We'll work it out among us. As to exactly, I'll have an arborist come out, take a look at the tree and decide how we're going to build around it, or if it needs to come out, or what's going to happen. We'll work that out between now. And I understand it's 11:14, November 14th is the next hearing date? Yeah. And we're on elevation, so you guys have a better idea what the footprint of the house is most likely to be like.
Okay.
Right. And we're also going to do a canopy analysis on the 45-inch tree.
Great. Okay, pleasure of council with this. And Marty, do we need to take public comment on the continuance?
No, sir, but we do need to announce the date and time, and that the public should be aware that the date of continuance, as I understand it right now, is November 14th of 2019 at 6:00 p.m. But there will be no further notice other than tonight's notice. You will get no other notice of the date of the continuance. So I suggest that anybody who wishes to appear on this case, take note of the fact that it is being continued. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Did we have a motion? Councilman Maniscalco and Councilman Goode seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that finishes our agenda. Now we go to motions in city business. Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Yes, the clerk has advised me that we have duplicate motion, though I need to clean up. So we had an agenda item about for staff to come in and talk about the tree matrix...
And if I may, councilman, I'm sorry, just individuals in the room, we're still, we're still having council, so if y'all could please take your conversation outside, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, sir, go ahead.
Anyway, we had a discussion requesting staff to come in and talk about tree matrix and removal of trees, et cetera. The motion got made for two different days, 8:22 and 10:03. So I'm going to move to strike it off of the 10:03 agenda as duplicative.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Anything further, sir?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilman Goode's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to amend the previous motion to change the date that represents the accommodation for the Parks and Recreation employees to rescue a drying team from August 29th to August 22nd. There's a conflict with a bunch of their schedules.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, how many commendations do we have on August 22nd? Do you know? The what?
218.
I counted 218. No, I'm joking. Just, just so that I know.
Councilman, Mr. Chairman, I see now one accommodation for his meeting, Young Green, but I also see that there are 9:00 a.m. appointments to various boards that...
Okay, then. So one, okay, good. Just making sure. Thank you. Anything further, sir?
I have one more. I have one more. I made to change the date, but I have one more. I'd like to make a motion to provide Candy Lo with accommodation on August 22nd in honor of her work as a community organizer and advocate for small black-owned businesses and her dedication within the community.
Okay, and that would be the third commendation that day, Marty? Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir? Councilman Maniscalco, anything, sir?
Just to make a motion that we wish Councilman Orlando Goode a happy birthday.
All in favor? All opposed? Nay, just kidding. And a very happy birthday to you, sir. You know, three years ago, when it was your birthday, we were running against one another in city council race. Now we're serving together. So there you go. So isn't, ain't it funny how time changes? That's funny. Happy birthday. Thank you, sir. Anything, sir?
Yes, I have two. As some of us may know, we have another group of champions in our city. And therefore, I'd like to invite the South Tampa softball team to celebrate their win in the Junior League Championship to be presented here at council during our evening session on August 29th. I would like to present the team as a whole, accommodation, and the players as well.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Carlson, I believe, seconded it. Yes, sir?
If I just have a question. You have, the evening session starts at 5:01 p.m. Do you want this prior to taking up city business?
I have asked them to come earlier. I can ask them again to come at 4:30 so that we can have them all...
I'm just saying, your meeting hour is set for 5:00. Normally, it would be set for 6:00. I just wanted to let you know that it was a 5:00 start.
Thank you.
Okay, and so what time will that be at?
I'd like, first thing, if council permits?
Yeah, we can do it at 5:01.
Okay, 5:00.
Five minutes, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, and even though Super Bowl is two years away, we have to start figuring out how we can combat human trafficking during that event. I would move that the council schedule a workshop on February 27th, 2020. And I would like to discuss how we will be prepared to prevent human trafficking, the issues and the consequences related to the setup and host of the 2021 Super Bowl. I would like to invite other agencies such as Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, County Commission Staff, TPD, Tampa Forest Authority, and any other agencies. My office will handle the coordination and ensure that we can have a robust representation of the entities that can help us manage this situation.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Goode's. Okay, in a very good motion, I know, was it last year we passed an ordinance dealing with massage parlors and some of the apparent abuse and apparent trafficking issues that go there. And this is a very important issue, so thank you for that. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the request of the planning commission, I'd like to make a motion to set a plan amendment adoption hearing for the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-03, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Number 19-05, and E2019-47, aka Tampa Comprehensive Plan 19-06, for the evening of September 26th at 5:01 p.m., the year 2019.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything further, Councilman?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Councilman, anything?
Yeah, three quick things if I could. You all know that, that there is, I have to be careful with my words. There is an issue that is out there that pits the First Amendment against the Second Amendment that we're not allowed to discuss. There is a, there are 30 cities that have joined in litigation to try to undo state law regarding that issue. St. Pete is an example as being one of them, and many constituents have asked us to join in. In addition to that issue, though, the same law firm which represents the city of Weston plus these other 30 cities is looking to create a consortium of cities that will file lawsuit regarding the preemption on trees. And my constituency in particular is very concerned about the preemption on trees and how it will affect us. That lawsuit has not been filed, but we could potentially be a part of it. I've asked Marty, and he said the city attorney, the new city attorney will have to make the decision about whether we could weigh in. I would like to make a motion that we request that the city attorney look into this, contact the law firm leading it, and come back to us with a recommendation on whether we could join in or not.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson. Yes, sir?
Just if the councilman wants to attach a date to that of when they want, when to return with a recommendation.
I don't have one, so if you have a recommendation.
No, I'm just asking, otherwise, it's...
Yeah, no, I would like to, I would like to set one. Should we see first if people like the idea, or should we wait till we get a date?
I think we'll get a 7-0 on that.
Well, I think it should be part of the motion ultimately.
Okay, can you, do you, I'm sorry.
How long do you wish to give the city attorney the opportunity to be able to do this?
At least a couple weeks. She's new, so maybe a month.
Okay, if that's the case, then you are looking at the first meeting in September, would be September 5th, if you wish to have it, is, if that's sufficient for the city attorney. Or you can, your next regular meeting is really on the 22nd, and after that, the next meeting after that is September 5th. So it's your call.
September 5th. So I propose, September 5th is the, is also the budget proposal on the, on the water and wastewater.
And if you reach out to the city attorney, if there's a reason for her to desire, desire to advance that and bring it to council sooner, they, she can do that.
Okay, so I'll propose September 5th.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Second, we, we spent a lot of time this morning talking about economic development. And through this side of our work, we fund the Tampa Hillsborough EDC. And as I understand it, looking at the documents, our contract with them, you know, is renewed, I think, every two years. I would just like to request that at some point, again, I don't have a date, but at some point that they come back in, or, and, sorry, staff come back in and give us an update on that investment. I think we spend about $500,000 a year with them and just talk about our investment and what the ROI is. So I'd make a motion that we would have staff report on the investment in the Tampa Hillsborough EDC and what the ROI is at whatever date we can set.
Do you have maybe September, what, 12th?
19th.
19th?
Do you want it before budget, or it doesn't matter?
Or that could be a question. That could be a question, if you wish to raise...
The budget, I think the budget doesn't matter. It's more the, it's more the contract and having a discussion about what, what we get out of it. Oh, whoever in, in economic development deals with them.
And do we have a date for that proposed?
What'd you say, September 22nd?
You have, your council dates in September are, your regular meeting on the 5th, the CRA meets on the 12th. You only have a night meeting then for council. September 19th is this regular session, and September 26th is the workshop.
September 19th. Okay, we have a...
Are you cordially inviting them to come as well?
Yeah, so the staff and the, and the EDC.
And your office would then, I believe it's the office, your office would invite them?
Okay, we can invite them.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, and I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Second.
Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Any opposed?
The last, the last thing, and hopefully she's not still looking anymore, but Peggy Land is, who a lot, I think we all know, is having a birthday soon, although she doesn't like to celebrate it. And I've been asked, not by her, but by her friends, to pass some kind of resolution. I'd like to bring that back next time. I don't have one today, but I thought she, I thought she might actually be here tonight.
Is it...
That would be a commendation, is that correct?
Well, what do you, what do you, sorry, I'm new to all this. Commendation.
Yeah, a resolution, as I've learned, because I did the same thing, would affect what, like a policy.
It's a statement of policy.
We can say that Peggy Land is a wonderful person, that's her policy, a salvation army, you know. But probably, I think a commendation would be a great gesture.
Okay. We just need it before, we need it, can we do it next, next meeting?
Your next meeting again is the 22nd.
I would just propose that we wouldn't present it to her, we would present it to her on her birthday.
Oh, well, then you could, you can just have your office prepare it and have it delivered off-site then as part of the motion.
But we still need to vote on it?
Yes, it's a motion, it's a commendation of city council.
Okay, but all we need to do is vote tonight, or we need to vote again after the...
Yep, and then you can write it up, send it out, have her here, wherever you want.
Great.
And who seconded that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by, I heard Councilman Citro first, by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, just kidding. I say that because she is one of the nicest ladies on earth, and who in the world would oppose it? That was a, that was a gesture of humor, a humor, a very sweet lady. Anything else, sir?
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder, did you have anything, sir? You had one more?
Yes, Annette just reminded me. Water Department is looking to present water, Community Waterwise Awards to two folks in town who are using Florida-friendly landscaping principles, and we want to honor them. The Water Department is requesting agenda item October 3rd, and the recipients are Karen Taylor of Hampton Terrace and Ingo Fuckler of Tampa Heights, October 3rd.
If I can, according to the calendar, I believe, is that off-site? Because October 1st is your council meeting.
October, what?
October 1st, according to the calendar, what I have before me.
Maybe she meant, maybe she meant October 1st.
And it would be on the ceremonial?
Yes.
Mr. Clark, is that correct, October 1st?
I was going to say, I remembered 3rd.
October 3rd.
What year are you in, Mark?
So, October 3rd, I stand corrected?
Why don't we just look at our phones and see what day is on Thursday?
It is October, I'll go pull it up. My apologies to council, I'll resolve the discrepancy with the clerk.
Thank you, sir.
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. Who seconded that? Second by, oh, Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, and just, and very briefly, if I may, tonight is the last night of, Dwayne, who, Dwayne, you're moving to, did you say HUD? Okay, well, well, Dwayne, we thank you for your time here, and you've been a real pleasure to work with. You're a very nice gentleman, and I just found out that tonight was your last night, but just thank you for all your work with the city. You're a very nice person and a gentleman. So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. We, we really appreciate all your hard work. I mean that. Thank you so much. And then just very briefly, lastly, last week I had motioned on, I think I said, I did it as a motion, on ATU and commendations for employee of the month for that unit. I'll be meeting with some folks from ATU to kind of plan that out. We're planning on having October 3rd, and I think that was part of my first, my motion, as the date for that. But what I would ask council members to do is, as you all know, we always have, and as Councilman Dingfelder mentioned when I did the motion, that for police and fire, we always have members of the community come and give presents and whatnot. And to, and obviously, we're going to solicit those individuals. I would fully expect that every last one of them would honor those who, you know, take the trash out every day, et cetera, et cetera. But just if there's any other group or business that y'all know extra, just please reach out to them, because I want to give these folks the bountiful appreciation that God knows they deserve. Okay, so may I have a motion to receive and file? We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Adjourned.